This is a City of Prescott City Council Voting Meeting, and it's always nice to see a packed council chamber with a lot of citizen interest and involvement. So, welcome, everyone. We'll start with introductions and announcements. Mayor Protam, do you have something for us today?
I do. Let's see, the announcements for today. Workforce Housing Needs Assessment. The Prescott Workforce Housing Committee, in conjunction with the city staff, are preparing a needs assessment to address the need of affordable housing in Prescott. As part of the assessment, an online survey is available for persons who reside or work in the town to determine the need for affordable housing and where it might be found today in the region. The city seeks citizen participation in the survey to better understand the availability of affordable housing. All responses will be kept strictly confidential, and individual responses will not be revealed to any employer or business. To take the survey, go to participateprescott.com and select the workforce housing tile on the homepage. The next item is Boards and Commissions' Vacancies. The City Council Subcommittee on Appointments is currently seeking applications from citizens who are interested in serving on the following cities' boards and commissions and committees. There are openings on Buildings, Safety Advisory and Appeals Board, the Fire Board of Appeals, and the Workforce Housing Committee. Boards, commissions and committees provide opportunities for citizens to take an active role in their local government. Applications are due this Friday, March 28th, by 5:00 P. M. For more information, visit the city's website at CityOfPrescottBoardsCommissionsAndCommitteesVacancies, or contact the city clerk at 928-777-1437. And finally, the city received a reply from the Attorney General's Office about a complaint that was filed by Councilman Montoya in October of 2023 alleging that open meeting laws had been violated by Councilmember Kathy Rusing and Mayor Goode over the termination of the former airport director. The Attorney General has responded that no open meeting laws were violated by the mayor or Councilmember Kathy Rusing. In addition, two separate complaints were filed by two members of the public against Councilman Montoya for violating the rules of an executive session. The Attorney General's Office has concluded that there was insufficient evidence to prove the allegation. The full report has been posted to the city website for anyone who wishes to review, and that's it.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protam. We'll now have an invocation by Pastor Dan Hurlberg from the Prescott United Methodist Church, followed by a pledge of allegiance conducted by Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Great day to be here. Great time to be in Prescott. The girls' soccer team plays in the state semifinal tonight. The boys' basketball team starts 4A tournament tomorrow night, and the girls' basketball team 4A tournament Thursday night, all home games. So, I encourage you to go out and go Badgers. Yeah, let us pray. Great and loving God, we thank you for the beautiful day in everybody's hometown. We give you thanks for the beauty of the earth around us, and we pray that you will make us faithful stewards of your natural resources. Today, we pray for you to send rain, or snow, or moisture of any form you see fit. We pray for those who are first responders, those who teach our children, those who are protecting our nation, and especially those in harm's way. We pray for peace. We lift to you these, your servants, guide them by your wisdom so that their actions might be fair and just, in order that our city might be a shining example of the abundant life that you have promised. These, in the prayers of our hearts, we offer to you in the name of the one who taught us to love our neighbors. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance
to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you for that. We'll start with roll call, please.
Mayor Goode.
Present.
Mayor Protam can tell me.
Here.
Councilwoman Freeworth.
Here.
Councilman Gambogi.
I am here.
Councilman Montoya.
Still here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
And Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
All are present.
Very good. We'll now have a presentation from Public Works Staff regarding general engineering standard revisions and opening a public comment period.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Mayor Protam, council. Thank you. My name is Randy Perim. I'm the Deputy Public Works Director and the City Engineer. Before I dive into the updates, I just kind of want to acknowledge some people here today, some of our partners in the region. This has been a year-and-a-half-long project, a lot of meetings, a lot of collaboration. So, I just want to thank the Town of Prescott Valley, specifically Heather Ruder, who's the Public Works Director. She's lent us her staff, and they've contributed a lot to these documents. Also, Neil Wadsworth, who couldn't be here, the Utilities Director for the Town of PV, he lent us his staff as well, and they participated. And we also want to thank Frank Marbury, the Public Works Director for Chino Valley. He wasn't able to attend a lot of our meetings, but he's been supportive of the project from the beginning. I also want to thank probably 30-plus staff here at the city that have also contributed and participated, and especially to Jennifer Mr., our senior designer, who updated all 150 Quad City Standard details. So, we couldn't have got across the finish line without her help. All right. Well, what are the general engineering standards? These are our written standards, and they cover all aspects of construction and design for both public and private development here in the city. There's a number of chapters and a wide array of topics, from utilities, grading, drainage, stormwater, dry utilities. Our engineering standards for CAD and survey are also included. The Quad City Standard Details, these are our graphical standards. They're part of the GES, and they just provide additional clarification and additional information for specific design elements. So, you'll find a Quad City Standard Detail for a water valve, or a manhole, or a sidewalk, or a curb and gutter detail. And these are very heavily construction-focused, so these are heavily used in the contracting industry, along with our MAG standard details. So, why do we have all these details? Well, they provide a number of benefits to our community, the first being uniformity. We want there to be efficiency in the design and construction process, but it also creates efficiencies for the city. As we take on this infrastructure and we have to maintain it, we want it all to look the same. If we have to replace a part, we want to know what we're replacing. A curb and gutter in the north side of town should look exactly like a curb and gutter in the south side of town. And if you're a contractor doing work in Prescott Valley, you should have no qualms about bidding work or going after projects in the City of Prescott, because we're all working off the same playbook. Another benefit is for the supply chain. We're not a big city. We only have a small number of supply houses, so the fact that we're all using the same details, same materials, same parts, the suppliers can then stock up on those materials, knowing that we're all coming for the same materials. So, we don't have any delays when we're actually bidding these projects, and we'd have to deal with long lead times. Another benefit is infrastructure longevity. This is pretty self-explanatory. We want our infrastructure to last as long as possible. So, if we spec our details correctly, and if it's installed correctly, then we're going to see the highest return on our investment. We don't want to be coming back after two, three years, having to replace something that was just put in. So, that has a direct correlation to our budgets. It's good for the communities, and it's good for the taxpayers. And lastly, it just creates safety in the community. I know that most people probably don't think of public works as a dangerous job or a dangerous career path, but it actually is. We have streets crews that are in our right-of-way every single day. They're around high volumes of traffic. We have utility workers that are in confined spaces. They're in trenches. They're in facilities that have high voltage or hazardous materials. So, we want to make sure our facilities are being constructed correctly, and to allow our crews to maintain those facilities in a safe way. And lastly, we want to protect our citizens. If you read the updates to the transportation section, it's all about safety. That's what's driving the conversation. So, we want our motorists to stay safe, our pedestrians, our cyclists, all to stay safe. So, to give you a little background about specifications and details, the Maricopa Association of Governments started a standard set of drawings and a standard set of specifications back in the '60s. They actually released their first set of drawings in 1966. So, they've kind of set the bar for the rest of the state, and they've been periodically updating those details ever since. So, they're really good at it. So, we don't want to recreate the wheel. Most cities and towns in Arizona adopt MAG as their base specifications, and then they modify from there based on the specific needs of the community. And we're not an exception to that. So, we are a four-season community. We're not like a Phoenix metro city that has two seasons, hot and not-quite-so-hot. Now, we have to deal with freeze and thaw cycles. We have unique soils and terrain, so we have to come up with our own specific standards for that. Different standards have developed over the years. You have Uppi County has some different standards. Prescott Valley had different standards. Prescott, and really, it was our current Public Works Director, Gwen Rowich, who started to have the conversation of, why don't we come together? Why don't we create a regional document that we're all using? So, those were first adopted in 2016. So, I just wanted to hit some of the highlights. The GES is a 10-chapter document. It's a very long document, so if you need some light reading at night, I encourage you to read the GES. We only updated three chapters, water, wastewater, and transportation. I will note that now this document will become a regional standard. In 2016, when we were working with our partners in PV, they made the decision to only utilize the Quad City Standard Details. So, for the last nine years, the GES was solely for the City of Prescott. In this iteration, and through this process, they are now looking to adopt the engineering standards as well as the details, which is great. This update also allowed us to codify some processes that we had already implemented. One of the processes you'll see in the water section was a process to allow a builder to get a water meter set for their project prior to the project being complete, so that they could have fire protection during vertical construction, which is very important to have. So, we've been implementing that for a while, but now it's officially in the GES. One of the other notable changes is you'll see some updates in the traffic section to our right-of-ways. Two of our typical sections for minor arterials and major arterials, we increased the width requirements for those, and we also added more multimodal facilities to all of our details. All right. Notable changes to the details. I just wanted to highlight that if you're in the Quad City Standard Detailed Documents, every detail has a number and it has a letter. The letter tells you where that detail applies. If you see a Q, that means all three communities are utilizing that detail. If it's a P, Prescott, PV, Prescott Valley. Pretty self-explanatory. But in the 2016 version, we had about 61% Q details, so 61% agreement between the communities. And in the latest iteration, the 2025 version, we are now at 79% agreement. So, close to a 20% increase in collaborating. So, that was an exciting storyline. Almost every detail had at least a minor change. Some of these changes were just a dimension update or a note, very minor. Some of these changes were material changes. It was a part that was no longer being readily manufactured, so we had to update the call-out. And pretty much all of the changes that we get are coming from the field. We have operators out there working every day. We have inspectors in the field working with our contractors, and so they know what's working and what's not working. So, if the same item continues to be a problem, we have to ask ourselves, well, is this a problem with the contracting community, or are our details confusing? And so, we're getting that feedback. It comes to engineering, and we try to make improvements. Lastly, we get feedback from our commissions, our boards, from council, and from the community. So, one of the items that we get feedback pretty regularly from the citizens, as well as from the pedestrian bicycle traffic advisory committee, is the need for more pedestrian facilities, more ADA connectivity. A week doesn't go by that we don't get a call or an email saying, why don't I have a sidewalk on my side of the street, or why don't I have sidewalk on either side of the street? So, we've tried to hear those different questions from the community, those comments, and incorporate those into our standards. So, it's kind of hard to read this. You might have to put on your readers to see this, but the lower detail is the old detail, and you can see on this residential collector street that there's a single sidewalk. It's four feet wide. The newer detail on top, there's a five-foot sidewalk, and you have it on both sides of the street. So, again, we're trying to promote multimodal. So, one question we're probably going to get is, do the citizens have any feedback in this process? If you're a builder or you're a contractor, you might say, hey, I wasn't at the table. I wasn't included. Well, we want your feedback. We're opening the 60-day comment period now, so anyone's welcome to go to our website and download the documents. All the documents have been redlined, so you can see exactly what's changed. I just wanted to thank Sandy Griffiths for being here today, representing YCCA. They worked closely with us in the past on other iterations, and we anticipate that they'll be wanting to work with us again on this round. So, we'll receive those comments and feedback. We'll try to incorporate them as best as we can, and then our hope is to bring this back to you sometime in the fall for adoption. I also wanted to note that we'll have an open house, April 23rd, at the Adult Center on Rossar Street, and that'll be 4:00 to 6:00 P. M. So, that'll be a very informal setting. We can sit down, relax, ask questions, go through standard details together, and nerd out together. So...
Councilmember Rusing, you had a question?
Thank you. Thank you, Randy. Intergovernmental cooperation is always appreciated, and the standardization will save everyone a lot of time and money in the long run. I just want to make a comment. I drive up and down West Gurley every day, and I've always been amazed at the power poles that are coming out of the middle of the sidewalk on the north side of Gurley. So, please tell me we won't be doing that anymore in the future. And also, there's only one sidewalk on, it's our main boulevard, and there was only one sidewalk on that side, and for some reason, everyone wants to walk on the other side of Gurley, and they're always walking in the bike lanes because there's no sidewalk.
Right.
And I remember many years ago, several ladies from that mobile home park were killed crossing the road to get over to the sidewalk. So, I'm glad we're doing this, and I think it's time that we grew up and had sidewalks on both sides, and to keep people safe, keep them out of the street, and hopefully, we won't have any more utility poles coming out of the middle of the sidewalk and making them non-functional.
Right. Yes, that's not a part of our new standard. So, but I appreciate your comment, and some people might think it's ironic, talking about standardization, because they probably walk around downtown and see anything but standardization. But being in an old city that grew up over time, from the late 1800s, you see a lot of non-standard installations that have happened over the years. So...
Well, thank you, Randy, and I want to thank Gwen for kind of initiating this whole process. I recall early on discussions about maybe working in coordination with our other Quad City municipalities, so that we might be able to do coordinated bidding on large capital projects. Because right now, we primarily rely on local contractors, because some of the bigger contractors are not willing to come up from the valley to deal with a project that's what they consider minor. But if we have coordinated engineering standards, then we could probably coordinate maybe some of the capital projects and be able to have a coordinated bid and be able to attract larger companies. That would probably give us maybe better quality at a lower cost. That generally is what happens. Have we looked into that at all yet?
Not currently, Mayor, but that's a great idea, and we enjoy working with Heather, and it's something we can look and do in the future.
Well, I think with these Q standards, it makes it a possibility that even a few years ago, probably wouldn't have worked that well.
Right. Yep, thank you.
Any other comments or concerns? Do you have any public comments on this presentation?
We do not, Mayor.
Well, thank you, Mr. Perim. I appreciate it, and congratulations. I think this is good work.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the open call to the public.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I get started with the open call to the public, we are at capacity in this room. I would like to request that if you're sitting in a row that has empty seats in the middle, that you please move in towards the middle, so that the people that are standing or in the back can fill in the seats. Also, if you are sitting or standing in front of a door, please move, because we have to keep the exit rows clear. Thank you. All right. Moving on to the open call to the public. The City of Prescott welcomes engagement, and residents may comment and address the council regarding matters that are not included on the posted agenda during the call to the public. If you wish to speak, please complete a green speaker card and submit it to me prior to the meeting being convened. As a reminder, speakers are limited to four minutes, and the call to the public will be limited to 40 minutes in total, with the following stipulations. Citizens will be limited to addressing the council on the same topic only four times in total. If a topic has been addressed more than five times by different speakers, the mayor may limit future discussion on this topic, and topics of a primarily national concern may be limited at the discretion of the mayor. I currently have one comment card, and that is from Dottie Morris.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I live in an area that is right up against the National Forest, and there is a mobile home park along 89 that is south of Peterson Lane, my exit and entrance into my community, and south of Hazely. Hazely is on the east side Peterson Lane, on the west side of White Spar. That consists of, this mobile home park consists of 100 sites and five RV sites with propane tanks above ground, large propane tanks above ground. When I have brought this up in the past over this issue to city staff, I was told that all that had been grandfathered, and it was perfectly legal. We all saw within the last few weeks what propane can do when it ignites. This area is right up against the National Forest. If there is a fire, propane tanks expand and explode in large flames, as we know, and then create shrapnel that will shoot right into my neighborhood. I'm wondering whether the council would look at a possible ordinance, whether these are grandfathered or not, that it's required that they be buried in the ground. These are all above ground, some of them covered with vegetation next to each one of the mobile homes, and it's really a hazard, not only to my community, but to the entire city. Because if those things, 100 of them, ever ignited, this would be like setting off a series of bombs. And I hope the council will consider this, because this is extremely dangerous, as well as trying to exit the area in a fire. I lived here during the fire, the Indian fire, and I will never forget, May 15th of 2002, to see the flames first smoke in the distance, thinking, well, this is the third time I've seen this in May of 2002. Not a big deal, until I heard all the sirens. Then, I saw the airplanes, and then I saw the flames cresting over Quartz Mountain, and I realized, we are really close to having the end of this community. And by keeping propane tanks, 100 of them, exposed above ground, we're even creating another hazard. So, I hope the city council will look at that as a possibility, whether these are grandfathered or not, that they at least be buried in the ground in some sort of encasement, or some way to protect them from overheating in case we do have a forest fire in that area. Thank you very much.
That's all, Mayor.
All right. We will move on to the consent agenda. We have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to the open call to the public. The City of Prescott welcomes engagement, and residents may comment and address the council regarding matters that are not included on the posted agenda during the call to the public. If you wish to speak, please complete a green speaker card and submit it to me prior to the meeting being convened. As a reminder, speakers are limited to four minutes, and the call to the public will be limited to 40 minutes in total with the following stipulations. Citizens will be limited to addressing the council on the same topic only four times in total. If a topic has been addressed more than five times by different speakers, the mayor may limit future discussion on this topic, and topics of a primarily national concern may be limited at the discretion of the mayor. I currently have one comment card, and that is from Dottie Morris.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I live in an area that is right up against the National Forest, and there is a mobile home park along 89 that is south of Peterson Lane, my exit and entrance into my community, and south of Hazely. Hazely is on the east side Peterson Lane, on the west side of White Spar. That consists of, this mobile home park consists of 100 sites and five RV sites with propane tanks above ground, large propane tanks above ground. When I have brought this up in the past over this issue to city staff, I was told that all that had been grandfathered, and it was perfectly legal. We all saw within the last few weeks what propane can do when it ignites. This area is right up against the National Forest. If there is a fire, propane tanks expand and explode in large flames, as we know, and then create shrapnel that will shoot right into my neighborhood. I'm wondering whether the council would look at a possible ordinance, whether these are grandfathered or not, that it's required that they be buried in the ground. These are all above ground, some of them covered with vegetation next to each one of the mobile homes, and it's really a hazard, not only to my community, but to the entire city. Because if those things, 100 of them, ever ignited, this would be like setting off a series of bombs. And I hope the council will consider this, because this is extremely dangerous, as well as trying to exit the area in a fire. I lived here during the fire, the Indian Fire, and I will never forget, May 15 of 2002, to see the flames first smoke in the distance, thinking, well, this is the third time I've seen this in May of 2002, not a big deal, until I heard all the sirens. Then I saw the airplanes, and then I saw the flames cresting over Quartz Mountain. And I realized, we are really close to having the end of this community. And by keeping propane tanks, 100 of them, exposed above ground, we're even creating another hazard. So I hope the city council will look at that as a possibility, whether these are grandfathered or not, that they at least be buried in the ground in some sort of encasement or some way to protect them from overheating in case we do have a forest fire in that area. Thank you very much.
That's all, Mayor.
All right, we will move on to the consent agenda. We have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 items on consent. Does any member of the council wish to pull any items off consent? Mayor Protam?
I didn't really necessarily need to pull it, but I did want to comment for the public's benefit. I'm the liaison to the Workforce Housing Committee here, and we've been working very hard for quite a long time on crafting a policy. We're getting close. Amber and some of the members were able to get a $200,000 grant in order to go forward, and they have hired Elliot D. Pollock and Company. He's got a great reputation. He comes to us with a lot of knowledge, so just wanted to make that clear to the public that we'll continue working on this problem, and hopefully, he will shed some light on some new avenues that we can take to try to start to deal with this issue, the lack of workforce housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda items.
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items 8A through 8E. Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Passes 7-0.
Very good. Now we'll move to item 9, Consent Ordinance.
Adoption of ordinance number 2025-1885, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the acceptance of public rights away from the Arizona State Land Department, authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said acceptance. An adoption of ordinance number 2025-1886, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, approving city contract number 2025-135, a land purchase agreement buy-in between the city and Escara Development LLC for the design and installation of a new air traffic control tower at the Prescott Regional Airport.
All right, is there any discussion on these items? Any public comment?
No, Mayor.
I will entertain a motion on the consent ordinance items.
I move to adopt consent ordinances, items 9A and 9B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Passes 7-0.
Okay, we'll move to item 10A for liquor license.
Public hearing and consideration for a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license application from Autumn Bliss Sierra, applicant for the Century Lounge, location 129 North Cortez Street. The application fee has been paid, and the sign has been posted for the required 20 days. Staff has reviewed the application and determined that it is in compliance, and no public
All right, any discussion? Any public comment?
No public comment, Mayor.
I'll entertain a motion on that.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
I have a motion and a second.
Passes 7-0.
Mayor, I move to approve liquor license application number 321671.
I have a motion and a second.
Passes 7-0.
All right, that moves us to our regular agenda. Item 11A.
Discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding adoption of ordinance number 2025-1883, in ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, placing on the August 5, 2025 election ballot, the question of amending the Prescott City Charter for purposes of protecting city-owned open space in perpetuity, and resolution number 2025-1914, related to a citizen petition received by the council at the November 19, 2024 voting meeting submitted by Bonnie McMinn and Rod Moyer.
Okay, how do we want to start this off?
I can go over quickly where we are. So I think this is the third time that we've gotten together to talk about this item. There we go. Under the petition, there was two purposes: to prevent the city from selling or otherwise transferring important open space properties to developer or other parties, and to limit the uses on open space property to preserve natural open space. So at our last meeting, the direction from council was to include as many properties as possible, but to simplify the document and to include allowed uses on these properties. So in that light, we went back to the drawing board and took the current paragraph in the charter allowing or protecting Willow and Watson Lake, added to that Goldwater Lake, so it allows for open space, recreation space, or water supply purposes in perpetuity, and then created two additional paragraphs. One paragraph establishing additional properties that will be similarly protected from sell or lease or transfer the property, and then the next paragraph establishing the uses that are allowed in those properties. And then we went about kind of compiling the list of properties. And I was told today I need to have larger font on the slides, but I wasn't able to make the changes yet. But if you recall, there were three lists of properties in the previous draft: protected properties, properties that weren't in the document at the time that staff didn't have a whole lot of concerns about, and additional properties that staff maintained concerns about. And that's these next three slides. All of these, and I know you have the documents, so I'm just going quickly through these, all of these properties are now in the document as protected. So as we went through the list of properties, we actually kind of went back to the drawing board and pulled all of the city-owned properties across the city, no matter what type of use it was, something like 500 properties, and then narrowed it down, focusing primarily on the iconic properties, properties that were brought to us by the petitioners, and included all of these, and then added some additional properties. Those are the added protected properties. Two additional parcels at Little Thumbbutte or Gil Hill. These two properties boil the busk. We added in the Peavine Trail properties from Watson Lake to SR 89A, and added in several of the West Granite Creek Park parcels and a few additional Centennial West Ridge parcels that we were able to find. So total protected property, there's 24 separate properties amounting to 95 parcels, roughly 3,000 acres, that are currently in the document. Now, we've had some additional requested properties that are not in, and I will explain why we didn't include those. Those are three parcels at Watson Woods and three parcels at West Granite Creek Park. For the Watson Woods parcels, one of those parcels, there's three that we refer to. One of them is already protected in the charter. It was purchased in 1998 from Chino Valley Irrigation District. That's currently already protected. But there are two additional parcels that just present a lot of concern, and we didn't feel as appropriate at this time to include it. These parcels, and I have a brief map, I'll show you in a second, have significant public works, infrastructure, offices, storage, and so forth. And these properties are currently being redrawn to be able to separate these uses, but we're not there yet, and we won't be in time for the election. There's an existing lease on those two properties for 20 years and a conservation easement being contemplated. So given kind of the protections in place, the possible conservation easement, and the fact that they need to be redrawn, we didn't feel as appropriate to have those two Watson Woods parcels. And I know that's hard to see, but if you see, and I didn't realize how hard it would be to see from, on a big picture like this, but the two parcels of Watson Woods there, you can see it extends all the way into the industrial areas down to Sun Dog Ranch Road. And I don't know, Gwen would have to say, but it's a substantial amount of infrastructure So we also left off three properties at West Granite Creek Park. In all honesty, it constitutes a lot of West Granite Creek Park, and so I think it's worth a council discussion of whether we should kind of reverse course, at least on one of these properties. But they weren't done to kind of obfuscate the issue. One is a parking area, one is, and actually, both the first two parcels there incorporate or have part of the Hilton Garden Inn on the property as it stands. And then the other property there, 800-11-021, or 29K, it would eliminate access to a private property, because the only way to get to that private property is through this city-owned space, and I'll show you here in a second. So these are the two parcels, the two first parcels. As you can see, the one, both of them, what's that?
Go ahead.
So both of them incorporate the Hilton Garden Inn, and then the splash pads on one. I don't think it's ready to move forward, at least at this time. We need to redraw some of these boundaries. Now, this is the one that is questionable and may be up to council to include it. It is substantial portion of West Granite Creek Park, to be honest. But if you can see that little rectangle of private property there, their access route is through the north, where you see kind of the squiggly blue line. That's their access. It hasn't been built yet. It would be a road eventually when this parcel was used, but it hasn't been used. So given kind of the bridge there and the access issues, we left it off, at least initially, subject to council discussion.
So you're referencing that triangular parcel that has three vehicles parked there?
No, the rectangle parcel right next to 180, in this, kind of in the center of the screen there.
Okay.
With all the green trees. Yep. That's private property. So that was kind of the thought process behind the properties that were left off. Now, as we mentioned at the time, we've simplified the document quite a bit. There's essentially one paragraph dealing with the restrictions on sale or disposal of the property and a section on uses. The question still remains, if council's ready to prepare it, you can still have the discussion of which properties to protect, including adding maybe one of those Granite Creek parcels or removing parcels as you see fit. So which properties to protect, and then which uses to allow. And I had this slide last time, and if we can remove the pop-up, that would be great. These are additional requested uses, just for your consideration. These are not currently allowed. Currently, the uses that are allowed are uses that are already existing: utilities, nature preserves, utility installation, and services, flagpoles, gazebos, visitor centers, bathroom facilities, trailheads, and city section trails, as well as ancillary uses, which would include some road and parking. These are additional uses that you may want to consider: recreation space, parks, telecom facilities, amphitheaters and arenas, campgrounds, and public safety substation. I think the public safety substation is an interesting one, because I think in general, it's probably unacceptable to have, at least in our minds, in some of these iconic areas to have a public safety substation. But in consideration, for example, of where the fire station would go, the trailhead area near where the Constellation Trail is, is one of those options, which would then would be prohibited under this. So an analysis of public safety substation, telecom facilities, recreation space, or parks or trails, or parks or telecom facilities, I think is worth at least a consideration by council. But otherwise, I think the document is about as simple as it's going to be while including uses, and it does include, as I mentioned, quite a bit of property. So that's all we have for the presentation. I appreciate the petitioners for meeting with us. We've met quite a bit, had some great times, and a lot of staff work went into it. So if you have any questions, we can deal with it. I know that Chelsea and Joe Baines have some input on those properties we left out, but otherwise, up to you and your discussion.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. This is a very momentous day for the community. We've all come together, the citizens, legal, city staff, to protect our open space for posterity. And the reason why we've come together to do this is legally, as it stands today, four council members, a simple majority of four council members can vote to sell any of these properties or lease them. And I don't think that's right. It should be left to the hands of the voters. If something should change in the future, we have that off-ramp. The properties are protected, but if there's some reason, it will go to the voters, and we will let the voters decide what to do with our open space. I think that we support Watson Woods, and there's an off-ramp in the language here that mentions conservation easements. It may not be ready to be added today, but in the future, we can certainly add it when it's ready. I have a lot of questions about Watson Woods. There's federal funding from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, because it's used for mitigation, pollution mitigation. And I would really want to make sure that it's okay with the federal government before we put this in. I don't know if Mr. Byrd's here and if he wants to speak to this or not, but I would definitely like to hear his opinion, because before we tie it up in the charter. And then as far as West Granite Creek, unfortunately, we have that one parcel that has a splash pad on it and has part of the Hilton Garden Inn building on it. I think that might be a problem, trying to get it into the charter. But the other parcel, I think we can go ahead and not worry about preventing someone access to their private property if they decide to build. I don't think we can prevent a road or them running utilities across a small section of that. So I think we've done a great job from where we started, and like I said, this has been a very high-profile, very community-involved project, and I just want to thank everyone.
Councilwoman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. Joe, I had a question about the additional uses you had on that slide. You referenced telecom facilities. Can you expand on, are you talking about like cellphone towers, or what are you talking about?
Yeah, and I'll be honest, this was taken just because it's in our current recreation space zoning, so that's where I took it from. But yeah, it would be antennas for radio and so forth, and it would be cellphone towers.
I know that the last time we met, I think there was a gentleman here, Sanford Cohen, who owns a radio station, and he had talked about some concerns about Glassford Hill. And I guess my question is, if I'm, these are additional requested uses that aren't reflected in the document currently?
This is currently not allowed, but what is allowed is pre-existing uses.
So he would be fine with his existing uses?
He would be fine, but if there were some other location we'd want to put it, it's a consideration. But him in particular would be fine going forward.
Are there any of these uses that staff has concern about? And I guess that's probably a broader question for maybe Chelsea, Joe, and Gwen. Or not. You don't have to. If you've got nothing, you can just say, I got nothing.
I could just jump in for a second and say, the more specific we get with uses, the more complicated and challenging it is to know what the future impacts might be. So if you say more broadly, you know, utilities, recreation, streets that are arterials, that broad use, that's a little bit easier than, as we get very, very specific, it's hard to know, have we got it all? Are we missing something? What about, what about the e-bike example from last time? What's the next e-bike?
Right.
So the more specific you get, the harder it is to say, we feel like this is right.
So I guess to that point, just to follow up on what you just said, is that a sense of you would rather keep it just to what it is and not add additional uses in?
I think that's up to the council, but I think the more specific we get, the less confident we are that we're not creating some sort of problem for the future.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. So I think my concern today is that when we met last time, there were the three lists, the ones that were included, the ones that could be included, the ones that might be included. And then we were given a new list today, and a lot of it's, you know, legal descriptions, it's parcel numbers. And I guess my concern is- And I guess my concern is, are we missing anything? I just, I want to make sure that we are complete, that we get every property into this charter amendment that we can possibly get and not leave anything out that we would regret leaving out. And so that's my concern is because I look at, you know, the staff material that has been prepared for us as council members, and it's difficult to understand what's in versus when we met two weeks ago. And I just, I don't know that I have the utmost confidence that we're there. I want to be there. I was ready to pass this thing last time. If you remember, I was the only one that voted no about continuing this because I just wanted to get it done. But my concern still is, I wanted to adopt it last week, last time because it is using the word "all" properties, and, but then it had a list of properties. And so that's one question. The other question is, those areas which Kathy mentioned, that in West Granite Creek Park where it shows that the, the property line of the open space areas actually include part of the hotel and part of other infrastructure, what is the process for redrawing or reworking those lines so that the rest of that parcel can be included? I think it's important to get the rest of West Granite Creek into this document. And what is the process to redraw that area? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Moore. Chelsea Walton, Community Development Director. So I'll start with the last question first. The process is a survey instrument and legal description. Obviously, we weren't able to have that complete by today. It's, it's a process, but absolutely. And that would assail or resolve the concern that we have regarding the parcel that would have access cut off for future roadway. We could have those right-of-ways extended on the north and on the south to ensure that access is secure for that private parcel, but also correct the property boundaries where the Hilton Garden Inn building is, to be able to really feel confident about adding those parcels in. So it's, the process is having city staff or a consultant perform a survey and redraw and get it, get it through, the review process and approval by council and then adding it to the list later on. That would be.
And I can answer this.
Timetable because it's not going to make this election, it sounds like, as far as what we're talking about for this charter amendment.
Correct. Yeah. So we can't do it today? No.
Not for those properties, but for everything else. And to answer your first question, the, in terms of the list, it had everything on all those three lists except for the Watson Woods parcels, and then added these additional properties. So there was more than those three lists combined. Now, do we know we got everything? I don't think anybody knows if we got anything, but I think we got the iconic parcels.
That was my concern, and I, maybe I should be content and happy that we've added so many more parcels, but I think there are a lot of people in the audience that are feel, have similar feelings that I do, that we'd like to do it right and get it done and, and feel confident that we got as many of the properties in there as possible.
If I may add, it would, with the redrawing of the Watson Wood parcel, or I'm sorry, the West Granite Creek parcel, if that's something that council desires and we end up adding that at a later time, that would also afford city staff the opportunity to dig into the 500-so-odd parcels and look at those. So more time is always what we need to actually investigate each of the line items and each of the parcels.
And I agree with you. I think the petition process has made this very difficult for us as a city, both on, on the staff and as well as on council members, to get our arms around this entire project in such a short period of time because there are so many different pieces of property that we need to investigate individually.
Right.
If we were to adopt the West Granite Creek Park parcels and we were cutting off the private property owner's ability to develop that, would that put us in some level of liability?
There could be liability. I think the truth is that there's a right-of-way there already. There's a road that may end, and I think the reasonable interpretation is that the road is already there, and just construction of a couple, another hundred feet would be allowable as an existing use. And as it stands, the roads are allowed to adjacent development, and I think we would allow it even under our current writing.
Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I want to remind everybody too that this is a living document. This can be altered. These pieces can be added to it. I had the opportunity to see a complete map of all the city-owned properties, and, and while there, I'm sure there's 500-plus, lots of them are little tiny easements for a telephone pole or things that are not, I mean, are they worth saving? Sure, we need them because they're a utility. But these are, is a complete, pretty good list of all the real iconic things. But can you, Joe, do you mind going back to that list of additional again? You know, I've been to a lot of parks throughout the United States, and I do think it's very important that we make an addition of some kind of a substation for policing. You know, as our community grows, things happen. I don't think we should violate that. I think at some point, we're probably going to need a public safety substation out there at Glassford Hill. People get hurt. I mean, you know, the Forest Service, the Fire Department, the police might need to be there to hang out for, you know, a big, I don't know, congregation of something. I think we should add that. I'd also like to see the addition of, and I'm just throwing this out there, but if anybody's been out on Storm Ranch and you've hiked back in there and you see where the Seavers live right now, that piece would be perfect for maybe a small stables. So, I mean, that could potentially be in our future. You know, the telecom facilities, I know we've got some up there already that are grandfathered in. The, the parks and recreation space, why would we leave that off? Because that's kind of what we want this open space to be for. Anything but developing and no commercial, no industrial, I think, is what our intent is here. So if we need to add those things, I'm in favor of adding those. I'm not crazy about campgrounds, but maybe they're suitable for, for some places. But definitely the public safety substation, a potential for an arena, you know, a horse facility eventually. I guess I'll leave off the campgrounds myself. Maybe somebody else wants to advocate for that, but that's just my suggestion on that. Thank you.
Yeah, I think you're trying to make a statement about balancing protecting the open space, but also being able to provide some very minimal amenities that allows people to enjoy the open space, especially if they're hiking or doing something else. I mean, I know we have one bench in one of the trails that goes through my development so that if people are hiking, maybe they're not, they're not the youngest part of our ownership group that want to maybe pause and sit and enjoy the view. That's a good thing to have. I know we have that over in the Constellation Trail area too. So eliminating the, even the most basic amenities, I think, does a little bit of a disservice of what the intention here is to protect them and to allow them to be enjoyed.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. Joe, if you, I'm not going to ask you to the decimal point. All the properties that you've included in the giant list we've got with all the GIS numbers, how many thousands of acres are in this list?
Yeah, I think the estimate is about 3,000.
3,000 acres. Bravo, staff, bravo, charter amendment people. Guys, we can wait another year to get this right and perfect. I say, let's go, and then let's get this, we're going to have to do West Granite Creek Park when we consider, we're going to have to fix the, the other section with the conservation easement. We've got to do those things, which means a year from now or six months from now, we can add more and go back to the voters. But to keep holding this up, we've gone through three meetings so far, 3,000 acres. We've been inundated with phone calls, emails, public comments, et cetera, other than one or two people. Everybody else is all in. They want this. And I say, you know what? If down the road, we start seeing that we need a public safety substation in the Dells Glassford Hill Park, then we come back to them and ask them, can we do that? And, you know, those are the things I'm like, let's, let's not make it any more of a meal than we've already had in three months on this topic. So that's where I'm at. I think it's fantastic. The only thing I would love for purposes of getting this before the voters, it's really hard to take in a list of all the, I went and looked at the map you had in the package, and the map is not right. There's a lot more products that need to be changed.
That was the old map. It hasn't.
Yeah. So I would love, with all the parcels that we've gotten in this list, to get this map updated because this is what will help people see the 3,000 acres that they're about to save in a vote. So that's where I'm at.
Councilwoman Gamboji.
I think if you looked up micromanagement, the dictionary, you'd see a video of this council meeting. I've, I've spoke to this before. I think everyone here, including myself, agrees that we need to protect open space, but my concern is how you do it and when you do it. And we're spending a lot of time right now where we have some other pressing issues. The other thing I'm concerned about is that the core, the premise of this proposal is that you can't trust city council, but you can trust the residents. Then I would ask if you can trust the residents to vote the right way on open space, why can't we trust the residents to vote the right way on electing city council members? I think this proposal is a hodgepodge that covers about 75%, and we've not examined all the unintended consequences, so I'm going to vote no on this proposal.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I would like maybe try to make comments that would simplify this process. While the city may own 500 different parcels of property, what we're really focusing on today is property that is zoned in the West, natural, open space. A lot of these 500 parcels that we own aren't zoned natural, open space, so we really need to get back to basics. Let's talk about natural, open space. And I think the goal for natural, open space is a light touch on the land. We don't want a lot of amenities in these areas. And while Mayor Protam and I may disagree on some of these lists of additional requests, but she also commented, if we feel there's a need for a public safety substation down the road, then let's take it to the voters. But for now, let's just focus on a light touch of the land and preserve natural, open space and get this done today.
Councilmember Ru Sing.
I'd like to make a comment about the voters. Time and time again, they'll elect somebody, and once they get elected, that council person will have a deaf ear towards what the voters have to say. So we have to be careful that our comments today aren't viewed as roadblocks and deflections. And some people might have a, an agenda where they don't want anything protected and they don't want to take anything off the table because maybe they're pro-developer and pro-development and pro-growth. I mean, I've seen a satellite, not a satellite picture, but an aerial picture of Glassford Hill where there's mass grading going on on the north end at Granite Dells Estates that's right up to the state park borders. So it doesn't take a leap of imagination to think that maybe part of Glassford Hill, another phase could be part of Granite Dells Estates. So I think we need to do this and respond to the will of the people. Thank you.
Okay, let's take it easy with the decorum here. Let's make sure everybody has a chance to make their point, whether it's supported or not.
Mayor Protam.
Yeah, one last comment. Remember, everybody, this is an issue that's been going on for 25 years in our community. 25 years we've been talking about this. It's a living document. It can be altered with the will of the voter. So I think you're right. We need to move on, get this started. We can change things later, but right now, we do have to move forward. Thank you.
And I think being able to analyze the potential future consequences and working through the details on this is very appropriate. We did the same thing with Proposition 478. It was clear that we needed to refine the language and make sure everybody knew exactly how it was going to be used in very specific terms, and I think we achieved that. So I think being able to add some of these additional amenity lists is probably appropriate. And think about what we're doing here today. We're just trying to make the decision on how and when this goes on to a public vote. So the public is going to make the decision on how this goes forward, and it's our job to make sure that it's well-described because the proponents will utilize the language to support it, and the opponents will utilize the language to oppose it. So the more that we can think about what the future uses might be and include that in the language, the more likely it is to be accepted. Did you have another comment?
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. I've, I've thought about this a lot. I think I do have concerns about getting this right, as Eric expressed. I want to make sure we get it right. I want to make sure we, we have language that we feel confident with. I want to make sure that when voters go to vote for it, they know what they're voting for. I am worried about the usage language, to be honest, because we have such a wide variety of open space, and it's leveraged in a lot of different ways, and it's leveraged by different people in different ways. And, and so the way that I might experience and enjoy thumb mute might be different than the way that Councilman Gamboji does, although I think we both have gone to the top of it. So I guess, that being said, I, I support this initiative, and I, and I want to put it in the voters' court essentially and say, the outreach that I've received from a number of people from all walks of life have, have been, it's been unequivocal that they support moving forward with this. And so I do want to be responsive to the residents of my community and support it moving forward and put it in your hands like we did with 478. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to go to the ballot language, which we got, I think separately sent to us.
And if I could, just real quickly, I, I think it's actually most appropriate if council approves the charter language today, and then we come back with the actual ballot language.
I love that, Joe. Let's deal with that next time.
Because the chart, the ballot language keeps changing as we change the charter language. We need the charter language, and you can vote on that, and then we'll bring forward the ballot language that is appropriate based on what you vote on.
Well, then, let's go.
And I'll add to that, if I can, that the ballot language for everything that's going to be on our very large primary election ballot will be coming to the council on March 25th for approval.
We would, at the next meeting on the 11th, I think, is when we would work on the ballot language for this open space initiative.
I think the plan would be to bring on the 25th. The charter language is.
All together on the 25th.
Yes, all together, because that's just, the ballot language is just getting cleaned up, and you have.
If there's any chance we can get at that one prior to the, prior to the packet coming out, that would be great, so we could give you some thoughts. Okay. Can we make a motion?
You have a lot of public comment.
We're going to go to public comment now, and I think Rod Moyer will begin. He's one of the petitioners. Then we'll look at other general community members making statements, and we'll follow that up with Bonnie McMinn's summary.
And before Rod gets started, Louise Trenkov, would you mind just coming up here so I can chat with you for a minute, please, ma'am? Thanks. Go ahead, Rod.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Can I get an amen? Bonnie is handing out some handouts to you for me, and I may not address the ball now because of some of the things that have been said previously today, but. now because of some of the things that have been said previously today. But the uses, I want to remind you that the uses paragraph, what the protected properties can be used for, were a response that we and Joe made to the very first meeting on January 14th. There were a lot of concerns voiced by staff about what they might want to do with open space properties, which I knew they could do under this language. But we wanted to add that paragraph to more explicitly allow such things as trails, trailheads, parking lots, and certainly benches, benches for hikers to sit on. Those things are part of natural open space. They have been forever here. We have benches along all of our trails, or at least the longer ones. So, Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, but these are fine, right?
Yeah, I think it falls under the trails and the trail uses.
Yeah. So one of the handouts that was just a reminder of what is in our Open Space Master Plan, approved by council in 2008, there are two paragraphs there that make the distinction between passive recreation spaces, which we would today call open spaces, natural open space, and the more development-intensive uses, which we would call recreation spaces or parks. This was distinguished in 2008. And yet today, 17 years later, our land development code still does not reflect this distinction. And that's one of the reasons that we didn't want to expand this list of uses any further. You could put an amphitheater right in the middle of what we call natural open space if we didn't specifically not allow it in this language. And to address Ted's comment, Councilmember Ted Gambogi, we don't, we can't always trust the people we've elected to do what we elected them for. Hossi Ampa Lake was sold out from under us, and I don't think a person who voted for the four council members that did that believed it would ever happen. But it did. I ice skated on that lake when I was 18 years old. Now it's behind a fenced compound with a probably $2 million home on it, and I can't get there. Luckily, I wasn't living here at the time it happened, or I would have been livid. So I just...
Right, I'm going to, as a petitioner, I'm going to give you five minutes.
Okay.
So you've got another two to go.
All right, thank you very much.
And Bonnie, you'll have five as well. Everybody in between, you're stuck with three.
So the land development code is very ambiguous on the distinction between these two uses, natural open space and recreation space, because it generally allows things like amphitheaters and campgrounds and recreation space and parks. The two terms are confused in the code. So I'll move on to, finally, the parcels list did not include Watson Woods. I hope that question's been answered as to why that was left out. I hope that was answered by City Attorney Joe Young. It's almost impossible to include it at this time because of the conflicting zoning in there. But it's protected for another, for the duration of a 20-year lease anyway, and we can always add it in later. And I think that's all I had to say, Mayor. Thank you.
Ready for public comment? Okay. Joanne Olers.
Is that going to work? I guess so. Good afternoon, Mayor Good, Mayor Protem, Cantal Me, and council. I'm Joanne Olers of Granite Gardens Drive, Prescott, speaking as the Chair of Save the Dells. As you know, most of the public has been shocked to learn that the majority of our hard-won, treasured natural open space land could be sold, leased, or used inappropriately. A much celebrated component of our Western heritage is our wide-open spaces. The city's character rests significantly on the natural world. Expansion and support for these lands is grounded in citizen action, and widespread conviction for the value of natural open spaces remains very high. For example, citizens' awareness and activism saved the heart of the Dells, and also Granite Gardens, to mention some significant examples. The stability of natural open space as natural passive open space is the basis for the new regional park. The driving engine for open space has been the public, and we see it here again with the diligence of Bonnie McMinn and Rod Moyer. The momentum for permanent protection has languished for years despite good efforts, but they opened the conversation to close this gap in protection. We want natural lands guarded by public decision-making. Save the Dells supports reasonable amendment wording acceptable to both the petitioners and the council. The amendment will bring any changes to a public vote, which allows flexibility within the protective framework, which is Kathy's off-ramp. If this version doesn't pass having city input and direction, citizens will have another option. Save the Dells is prepared to move ahead if necessary with a citizen's petition with language reflecting the best interests of the general public. Through this process, we would begin collecting signatures to place a preferred version on the November ballot. It's time to commit to protecting our valued open space, whether it's through appropriate action today by the council or through a citizen's drive to let the voters decide if any changes happen in open space. Let's get this done.
Walt Anderson.
I'm going to ask you one more time to keep your applause to yourself. We're going to have people that are not in the support of this speaking today, and I want to make sure everybody is respectfully allowed to make their points. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I would like to wish you a happy birthday today, Walt.
Thank you very much. Not exactly how I expected to spend my birthday, but I'm glad we're here. Well, thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to speak today. I'm Walt Anderson, a denizen of the Dells, and a longtime advocate for protecting functional open space as a valuable amenity for our citizens, visitors, and the wildlife with which we share this special landscape. I commend you, our current council, for your interest in lasting protection for open space. This has not always been the case, as most of you know. I appreciate that Rod Moyer referred to distinctions given in the Open Space Master Plan, approved in 2009, written in 2008. A couple of us authors are here. I was one of the authors, and we clearly distinguish between the characteristics of natural open space and the more intensive recreational uses, which should be restricted to parks. Recreation of open space is considered passive, essentially human-powered, and that does not harm native vegetation, wildlife, or cultural resources. Parks are the places for development-intensive uses, ballfields, playground equipment, and the like. The Seaver Inholding, for example, is not natural open space. It would qualify as park, and it would be an amenity adjacent to natural open space that they could use. So you could have stables, you could have a visitor center. It's not a problem, because you don't call it natural open space. Once the dust has settled after getting this amendment to the city charter, the city should systematically revise its documents so there could be no ambiguity between what open space is and what parks are. We clearly recognize that the west side of Watson Lake is correctly called Watson Lake Park, is intensively used for recreation, has specialized facilities and uses. On the other hand, Strickland Park near Thumbbute lacks intensive development and has the properties of natural open space despite being called a park. We need consistency in our documents, but now is the time to put those protections in place before further refining occurs. The charter amendment conforms well with the strong recommendations of the Open Space Master Plan. The beauty of the amendment is that if future changes to uses on natural open space are desired, the city can take those to the voters for approval or disapproval. Flexibility still exists. If we can assure lasting protection for our open space as a system complementary to our developed recreational parks, we will be the envy of the country. Let's do it right. Thank you.
Dottie Morris.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I want to thank you for looking at this. This is extremely important. I admire that we are a charter city. What we discussed, as had happened in the past, has affected our future. And I think in a charter just like we have a constitution in the United States, it gives us flexibility for the voters to make some really critical choices. And I think that the speakers that we've had, Joanne and Walt, are absolutely right. Let's get this to the voters as soon as possible, August 5th. They can make this important decision, and then the technicalities can be taken care of. Just like our U.S. Constitution has a statement of freedom of speech, that's been interpreted by the courts, the Supreme Court. That could be considered a technicality. They could have defined what kind of speech, where, what. We don't need that on this amendment. We just need to get it done. Thank you very much.
Dan Pruszek.
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilmembers. Dan Pruszek, Prescott citizen, resident. I'm just going to amplify a couple of things that have been brought up by several people. This is not a fine black line that divides the community between, you know, pro-development and anti-development. There's flexibility. It's a living document, as Ms. Cantal Me mentioned. The voters and the council can make changes to the document and the properties. Proposition 478 is a good example of them recognizing when public safety is at interest and a priority, that if something is needed in a certain location, or in general, that the voters will support that. This is not saying the voters don't trust you, but influence occurs that is not reflected during campaigns and elections that adversely affects the community. And this is not a general mistrust issue. This is a point of protecting iconic aspects of our community, and I think it's widely recognized that the community writ large supports this. So let's get the vote done. Let's get the properties that we have listed protected, and move forward, and modernize, and update this document as necessary in the future, but let's get this done today, if at all possible. Thank you.
Michael Byrd.
Mayor, council, and staff, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'm Michael Byrd. I'm the executive director for Prescott Creeks Preservation Association. I was a member of the Open Space Committee that drafted the plan that Walt worked on, and we manage city property for the city at Watson Woods Riparian Preserve. I'm here to ask that the city place Watson Woods back on the list of properties that would be covered. Prescott Creeks does support this action. I've spoken to council once. We've submitted two letters in support of the proposal, asking for revisions, and met with staff as well. I appreciate the staff responding, both staff and council responding to our request for revisions. I think in the current version that we see now, some of those revisions were taken and made and added into the language that we see. But I think it is, it's a big omission to leave Watson Woods Riparian Preserve off the list of covered properties. Not only is Watson Woods Riparian Preserve one of the original open space properties that the city has had, it also is all natural open space. So there has been some confusion about the zoning of the property. The entire 126 acres of the current preserved property is all zoned as natural open space. There is adjacent private property that is not zoned natural open space, that I think has been confused as being part of the property. And so I think the two proposed revisions that have been included are addressing the issue of leases. Prescott Creeks does hold a lease with the city of Prescott. That lease does have a 20-year life left on it, but it's just a lease. Leases are temporary. And then the second request that was made was to accommodate conservation easements, and that has been included in the language in multiple ways. And we support that and applaud that and thank council for doing that. So I think one of the things, as we think about conservation easements, the conservation easement that Prescott Creeks and the city have been working on is not completed. That's going to take future council action. We hope to be back in front of the council later this year, asking for the council to support putting that conservation easement in place. Should the conservation easement not be finalized for any reason, that leaves the preserve with only the lease protecting it, which is not very strong protection.
Please conclude your remarks.
And so conservation easement, even when it's applied, does not preclude the property from being sold. So, thank you.
Amber Fields.
Hi, I'm Amber Fields, 6100 RW Fields Road, Prescott. And I'm here today to support the open space amendment charter. And I'm speaking here as former Save the Dells chair. I volunteered thousands of hours of my life to protect open space and our beautiful Granite Dells. And I'm also here speaking on behalf of my grandparents, who are now deceased, Robert and Frances Fields, and Jim and Norma Burhans. They collectively lived in Prescott for over 100 years and were city residents and taxpayers. And while two of them were deceased when the open space initiative came about, two of them were still alive. And I remember them wholeheartedly supporting it. They were very excited because they didn't like to see the type of development that was going on around Prescott, and particularly not leaving any spaces between development. And that's one reason why I would urge that all of the natural open space eventually be protected under the charter. I remember my grandpa being upset with hotels that had to have open space as a part of the requirement, and then people just sort of lost track of that open space, and then it ended up being a parking lot. I'm sorry, parking lots are not natural open space. And I know that they were disappointed when, I know that they thought that they were voting, when they voted for the initiative, for all of the funding to go towards open space, and then a bunch of it ended up going towards roads. If we had spent more of it on open space at that time, we would have even more open space, especially considering the price of property today and what it was back then. We could have had so much more. So let's protect what we do have, because it's not as much as we could have had. It's not as much as the voters wanted. And I don't support any of the additional requested uses for natural open space, because if open space isn't left open, natural open space, then it's not open space. So, you know, public safety substations, that could be a police department. It could be a fire department. And that's not really what our open space is for. It's not what the voters voted for. So I wholeheartedly support you passing this and taking it to the voters. Thank you.
Sue Knapp.
Hello, my name is Sue Knapp. I'm a member of the West Granite Creek Park Restoration Coalition. Because of your support, our coalition can expect West Granite Creek Park to be restored to its open space car-free splendor, and I thank all of you for that. But I shudder at the thought of a different city council, given the choice of whether or not to turn our open space park into a permanent parking lot. Fortunately, you have saved it, but only because you took the time to learn and care. The saga of West Granite Creek Park could happen to any of Prescott's open spaces. 25 years ago, we believed the creeks, the native trees we planted, and the car-free trail we built in our park had been protected as open space by the city council. But 21 years later, the city department in charge of the care of our park removed its own barriers to allow parking. Trees we planted disappeared, truckload after truckload of gravel was dumped, obliterating that section of Greenways Trail. For three years, we were told this was temporary, then last year, we were given the design drawings to turn our park into a permanent parking lot. Since then, we have gathered countless supporters, we have spent thousands of hours researching evidence and documenting to prevent the parking lot. But now, as you see today, our open space park has been carved up, leaving more than half vulnerable to continued abuse. Do you have your handouts there? Great, thank you. So you can see how much of that, of our park is missing from today's potential protection. Please ensure that the entirety of West Granite Creek Park is included in this list, all 10 parcels that you see on that handout there. They're all zoned NOS, natural open space. Today, we heard about the existing, the pre-existing uses, the cell phone towers. We aren't going to chuck Glassford Hill off the list because they're cell phone towers, right? Why should we cut out more than half of West Granite Creek Park because we have a corner of the Hilton Hotel on it, which, we won't get into that, but anyway, the splash pad is on it, but that's, you know, that's like a cell phone tower. Why not allow these pre-existing uses, also the property access?
Sue, you have 20 seconds.
Okay, thank you. So please vote to enable permanent protection of all of Prescott's open spaces, but including the entirety of West Granite Creek Park, to ensure our park's protection, because it won't be unless you do. Thank you very much.
Stephen Munzel?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Steve Munzel, 1608 One Half, Idlewild Road. I've been a Prescott resident for 50 years. When I came to this community as a young lad, the granite dells struck me as one of the most, the most beautiful place I'd ever been. Now, on the other end of my life's arc, having been to many, many countries, most of the continents, worked as a commercial outdoor educator in a variety of environments, the Antarctic, the Arctic, I can say that Prescott, everyone's hometown, granite dells, these iconic parcels to which you refer to by numbers and letters, remains dear to my heart as clearly some of the most beautiful natural open spaces on the planet. And as a citizen and a voter, I want to trust our city government, and really, that's what this boils down to. And I think when we look at parcel lines and we see that they are owned by the city, and they are incorporated into a Hilton Gardens building structure, that there is occasion for greater attention to detail and perhaps follow-through on some of the bureaucratic nuances that you would certainly hold the citizens to if we wish to develop our properties. Having said that, I do appreciate all of the energy that's going into West Granite Creek Park right now, and I think, again, that demonstrates we need to be held to account. And trust is something that is earned and demonstrated through action, not by an electoral process. So thank you for the attention that I've experienced, you attending to in this issue in these last three meetings, and I know you're going to do the right thing today, and I applaud your action.
Mike Fan?
So don't, don't kill me. So you've heard from me before. Set the emotions aside. I very much appreciate what they're trying to do. They're speaking with passion. I get it, I understand it. From a business perspective, I don't agree, only because they're not the fiduciaries of the property. The city of Prescott is the fiduciary. So you're going to encumber your own property by endorsing this, which I just think is bad business. That said, a councilman many decades ago said, "Mike, if you can count to four, sit down and shut up." So I think I can count to four. I know where you're going. I would like to clear the air a little bit and bring the other side of, I keep hearing about Haasayampa Reservoir. So I graduated Prescott High School in 1975, and we'd go up there and we'd go swimming. And my kids were born in '78 and '79, in the eighties, I'd take my kids up there and go swimming. And it was great. Except where we would park, as the city grew, where we would park, there was no parking. So we'd park along the road, and it's, and at some point, it got busy enough up there that you'd have to park, you know how you're going up Senator Highway, and you have to make that hard left-hand hairpin turn towards Potato Patch on Walker Road? We'd have to park down there and walk quarter to a half mile, because there was no place to park. And there's no place to get a fire engine through there, and there's no place to get an ambulance through there. There's no sanitary facilities, there was no place to put trash, and it started becoming a real liability to the city of Prescott. So at that time, the city staff and council said, "Do we fence it off, or do we sell it off?" Keep in mind, this isn't in the city of Prescott, it's a piece of property 11 miles from downtown, up a dirt road, that was only maintained during the summer by the county. So I appreciate the other side of that, but there was a specific reason, and it was liability. It was a business reason for the city of Prescott to say, "It's become a huge liability out there for us, and so it's time to say goodbye to Haasayampa Reservoir." Wasn't anybody doing anything wrong, doing anything, there was no bad actors there, they were making a good business decision for the city of Prescott. So I would ask, if you're going to move forward with this, that you at least carve out some wiggle room for futures, for this staff, for this council, and future staff and councils, if there was ever a time that...
30 seconds, Mike.
Okay, thank you. I'll close, I'll wrap it up. If there was ever a time, and I'll give you, for instance, if this council was presented with the opportunity to take, let's say, the Yavapai Hills Developers Parcel that's up there on Glassford Hill Road, or the Stone Ranch Parcel that is private, what if there's an opportunity that somebody said, "If you'll sell me 20 acres of this area that's next to the highway and next to an industrial park or sewage treatment plant, and I'll trade you for that 200 acres of open space on Glassford Hill Road"? You're tying yourselves and future councils to that. So at least look at some, I ask you to look at some language to give a little wiggle room for a future council to make some good decisions that could expand open space. That's all I have. Thank you.
Tom Rusing?
Tom Rusing, resident of Prescott. I just want to echo the comments by Joanne Olers, Walt, and many others here. And what I'm a little concerned about is, I think the general intent of the petitioners and Joanne and Walt were to not include additional requested uses. And so I would hate to see a motion that includes them and then difficulties in that regard. So I just want to echo that for natural open space, those issues, those activities are not appropriate. And regarding, and if there was a need to do that, that can be taken back to the voters. And if there's a need to sell a parcel like Mike was talking about, Mike Fan, you can take that to the voters. So I still think protecting all the open space we have is the priority. Thank you.
Candace Sheridan?
Good afternoon, Council. Good afternoon, everybody in the room. My name is Candace Sheridan. I apologize for my informal look. I just came from my horses in very open land. I just wanted to bring up a couple of questions that I am waiting for answers for, so forgive my naivete if I don't know the answers that you may have already presented. First and foremost, I would love to know the clarification, or if there will be clarification, between, while my heart is with absolutely protecting our open land, I'm also an owner of a music festival at Watson Lake Park. And that event brought in $850,000 of economic impact to the city of Prescott last year alone, two and a quarter million over the last three years, which, as we grow, which is happening, whether we want it to or not, we will eventually need more fire stations, more police departments, more people in our community supporting our community, and events like mine help feed that bucket. So my question there is, where will those lines be drawn between our parks and our open spaces with their labeling and their definitions? My secondary question comes down to a point that I haven't yet heard. I'm going on very basic knowledge here, it's a simple Google search, but to my knowledge, in our community, half or less of our population is even registered to vote. From that, half of people register to vote, half or less than that even engage in voting, which I'm sure you all are very well aware of, trying to be elected. So my question to council is, when these things go to the public, how are we going to educate our public to participate? How are we going to get them involved so that they understand why the need for their votes are even taking place? Because as of right now, I can tell you, I learned about this meeting about a few hours ago. And I'm a young person in our town, and I want to be civically involved, and I love our open spaces, but I'm also a business owner, and I utilize some of that open space. So as somebody who is active in this community and working every day with a child, who is not able to spend most of my Tuesday afternoons here, how are we going to educate our public to be involved, to make wise decisions such as this, from a perspective when right now we have most likely, and please correct me, but like, less than a quarter of our population even engaging in the civics process? Thank you.
That's all, Mayor.
Okay, Ms. McMahon, I'll give you five minutes to do your wrap-up summary.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. My name is Bonnie McMahon, and I time this at 2:59. So I might go a little slower, but as I proceed, I do appreciate everyone today, all the comments from the council and from the audience. I do want to address Mr. Fan's comment, at which the off-ramp is, we take it to the voters. So when something comes up, if there's a good trade or something's going on, we take it to the voters. And that is an easy solution, and that is a good deal for the community. So, over the past several weeks, the citizen petitioners and the city attorney have worked tirelessly, you've heard this, managing staff objections and council questions, and we have compromised. This is very different from the first version. Throughout this process, and we are very satisfied with the results, properties, parcels, specific uses are identified. Watson and Willow Lake will have Upper and Lower Goldwater Lake to complement our recreational lake portfolio. And to address the last speaker's comment, it is a park, so park allows for things like what she does. So she is completely protected, and Watson is a big park. People visit and live in Prescott because of our beautiful natural environment. Remember, open space is a huge economic driver for the community, and it's open for business 24/7, 365 days a year. Our spectacular iconic landscapes are on the cusp of protection in perpetuity, just as was promised over two decades ago. Prescott voters deliver for our city. You know this. We taxed ourselves in 2000 for open space. Of course we did. It was the right choice. When the city advised the council to flow to sales taxes, the only way to shore up PSPRS, we did it. Of course we did. It was the right choice. Recently, staff informed council that the only way we could afford new fire stations and add public safety staff without going broke was to raise the sales tax. Of course we did. It was the right choice. You see the pattern. You ask, and we deliver. So now I ask that you make the right choice and approve this charter amendment, place it on the August ballot, side by side with the 2025 general plan, and let the voters decide. It is the right choice. And if the city wants new uses or something else, you just ask us, and we will make the choice, the right choice. We always do. We worry about ongoing efforts to turn West Granite Creek Park into a parking lot. It almost happened right before our eyes. We worry about developers making a comeback. Of course, they could, because these, they could purchase, they could trade, they could develop, or they could lease our open space. Why? Because these lands are not protected. And so, Mr. Gambogi, I make the point to you, our frustration lies with past councils and staffs that didn't understand the urgency. It's a priority for us today, as evidenced by the audience here. And because if not now, when? And you are correct, you are the council to get this done. It's why you were elected. Imagine developments at the Thumbute Reef Shed on Goldwater Lake, granite dells, Glassford Hill, Centennial Trail, Constellation Trail, AED, Peavine, or Storm Ranch. Impossible to consider, but it could happen without this protection. Let the voters decide. You count on us, the citizens, to make the right choice. Now, may we count on you. This is your legacy. Thank you.
I'd like to ask legal for some direction before we make a motion. As far as Watson Woods, do you recommend that we put Watson Woods in today or not?
The staff recommendation would be to leave out Watson Woods now. And that's not to say it shouldn't be protected, but I don't think it's ready, given the way the lots are drawn at this point.
And we can put it in when it's ready, like with next year or in November.
Right.
And then also, I'd like to ask for some direction as far as West Granite Creek Park and those three parcels. It seems to me that one of the parcels, we've solved that problem, the one with the, has the private property, the easement and the access, could we include that?
Yeah, I think that if it's council's desire to include the 800-11-029 parcel, that that, that you can do that without incurring some substantial liabilities. I think the two parcels with Hilton Garden Inn requires more work as well.
Okay, but we can include those when they're ready.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to build on Kathy's line of questioning, Joe. The process of adding additional properties into perpetuity of open space protection, will that future action have to be a charter amendment, or will we be able to do it as a voting body where we can say, "Okay, we've cleared up these legal issues, the definition of the property lines, and now we can add it to this portfolio"? What's the process going forward?
The process for permanent perpetuity protection would be a charter amendment.
Every time?
Every time.
So even as we go down this road, we're just going to have to keep doing this over and over and again?
That's correct. I mean, we can, you can update code without going through an amendment and so forth, but then future councils could reverse it. In order to change the charter, we can only do it through the charter amendment.
So we couldn't have language that would state any future purchases of natural open space could be added to the portfolio without going to the charter? We can't do that wording upfront now?
We'd have to design a process that we haven't contemplated at this point. And I don't think that it would really fit in the way it's currently drafted. I think we'd have to figure, redraft it.
I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm just trying to, I think that there's probably people in the audience that are wondering that same question, and I'm certainly wondering that same question. So I just wanted to ask those questions.
Yeah, I think that there's, the automatic vesting and kind of open space protection is difficult because how do you determine? So presumably, a future council could say, this is an open space protection property and so we're buying it. And it would, but there's no way to build that into the charter with the language that, like we have it. And I don't think it would necessarily be appropriate either because it expands the nature of the vote that citizens are going to take in August or November, whenever this goes to the voters.
It looked like Sarah maybe wanted to say something.
No, I was just going to add, I mean, I can't change "the" in the charter without taking it to a vote of the citizens of Prescott. That's just not how a charter works. It's not done.
Thank you for that clarification.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to build on the last two folks. I want to push again because we have a very clear map on what is the Watson Woods Riparian Preserve. I've seen the map in here. Could we just use those words? I understand we don't have GIS numbers yet because we would have to go about the work that we outlined with Courtney before. But could we just add the Watson Wood Preserve, Riparian Preserve, use that language and in essence meet the need without missing this opportunity?
I think you could. And, but I'll give you the downside of it. The downside is people want to know exactly what they're voting on. And we could have a map that would include that. But the legal descriptions aren't necessarily in place in the same way they are for all of these other parcels. So that's the downside. But I think if you said Riparian Preserve, we would create a map that we present, assuming you approved charter language, we finalized the map before we came forward with the ballot language. And the ballot language is not the substantial part, but we could have that done by the time ballot language is approved.
Let's do it. Let's add Watson Woods Riparian Preserve.
Councilmember Ruasing, you had another question?
If everyone's done, I'd like to make a motion.
I think our options here are to vote up or down on adding this information to the proposed charter amendment language and/or including the uses or modifying the use list. Is that correct?
Correct, yes. It's an up or down on the charter amendment. And as we often say, yes, no, or yes with modifications. So you could also approve it with modifications. The modifications would be adding a parcel, adding a use, whatever the council sees fit.
So we would have to consider a motion that either approved it in total or approved it with modifications? And then list the modifications that we would want to see, primarily looking at the list of approved or unapproved uses?
Correct, or properties as well.
If we were to choose to add properties over and above what's already on this list?
If you were, yes, exactly.
Okay. So those are the conditions that we would have to consider on a motion. And Council, Mayor Protem, can you tell me you had a question?
Yeah, Joe, could you go back to the Watson Woods slide that you had? Because I'm a little worried, I mean, I would love to be able to protect that, but as you pointed out in your slide, we have a lot of considerations still. And there are some contemplated conservation easement thoughts for that. But I was worried about those existing and promised utility. How, is this going to hold up the whole thing? Because we have not mapped that out yet. I'm worried about that. Because we can add it later, but do we stall this now to allow them to do all that work that is not done on the Watson Woods because of the promised, we have some DAs that are reliant upon those utilities? I don't know. Not that I don't want to preserve that, but I think at this point, we need to cut that loose and move forward and then add it when we have all those other things taken care of. Just my thoughts. Do you have the slide of the list? You had a list with Watson. I think there were two items on the Watson. Here, right here. Okay, so parcel 10505006K is already protected in the charter. It was purchased in 1998. Let's see, the Prescott Creeks parcels, that doesn't have anything to do with it. But we had some easement issues out at the Watson Woods parcel that were not solved, unless they've been solved since the last time we talked about it.
Yeah, and I think that really that's getting more into some of the conservation easement, or issues that we're dealing with. So in terms of the utilities that are currently going across there, that's allowed under the language. So that's, it's not a concern for, for me, that's not a concern. For me, the concern is kind of what we pointed out, that the parcel is much larger than just the Watson Woods Riparian area. That's the concern, I think.
So then does that, are you telling me that that would be a big stalling situation right now for us moving forward with this?
I don't think it's a big stalling situation. I think that our recommendation is to leave it out, quite frankly. But if Council wants to bring it in, I think it would be Watson Woods Riparian area and we'll draft the map between now and the time that the actual ballot language is approved.
Yeah, because Sarah, when is our cutoff date for that ballot language?
March 25.
Okay, so it's coming up really fast. So is it possible?
It's possible to have the map. And we would draw the map from the actual lease with Prescott Creeks, which exists already.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Moore.
Yeah, I was just going to add the clarification that Joe just added. We're only talking the Watson Woods Riparian Preserve, not the entire property. We're just talking the portion that we have a lease already with Prescott Creeks Preservation Association. So I think that's absolutely doable.
Are you nodding in agreement, city attorney?
Yes, that is doable.
Okay, then I guess we are prepared to make a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move to adopt ordinance number 2025-1883 with modifications, with the following modifications. Add Watson Woods Riparian area and...
Riparian Preserve.
I'm sorry, Riparian Preserve, thank you. And also add Granite, West Granite Creek parcel number 800-11-029?
Yes.
029.
Second.
And no reference to the uses?
No.
All right, we have a, we have a motion and second.
Councilmember Ruasing?
Yes.
We can do the ordinance and the resolution in one motion? If we want to simplify this? Are you comfortable adding that?
Yes. And move to adopt resolution number 2025-1914?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Passes 5-2.
All right, we'll move to item 11B.
Presentation, discussion, and possible action regarding a proposed sculpture donation from Jean Galazan. Mayor and Council, I don't have much of a presentation for you on this matter. All of the items related to the proposed donation were included in your packet materials. As stated in the memo, the donation has gone through the newly adopted art donation policy. The Civic Enhancement Committee reviewed the proposal back in December of last year, and they did make a recommendation to accept the donation and approve the location. Following that motion by the Civic Enhancement Committee, the 60-day public comment period was opened. City Clerk's office received 46 public comments regarding the sculpture donation. Of those 46 comments, 33 were opposed to acceptance and placement of the sculpture. Five were neutral to acceptance and placement, and eight were in favor of acceptance and placement. All of those comments were also included in your packet materials. So up to the council today, following your discussion, is whether or not you want to accept the donation of the sculptures and place them at the proposed location.
Thank you for that, city clerk. I would agree, the vast majority of emails I've received have had a variety of objections to the sculpture itself, to the placement of the sculpture. Some of the equestrian people who use that trailhead are really concerned about its impact on their horses. And I just think it's, although it's a laudable attempt, and I have seen the similar sculptures above the Thippen Museum, and that seems like a pretty good place for them. But at a trailhead, it just doesn't seem to be appropriate for the design or the location. Councilmember Ruasing?
Thank you. We recently initiated an art in public places policy which required a 60-day public input period. And this generated a lot of attention. There was even the Courier, the editor of the Courier even weighed in on it. So they got a lot of comments also. And, you know, it's obviously 38 versus 8. And I think the people have spoken. This is public art and the public should have a voice in this. Thank you.
Any other comments or concerns from council? Do we have any public comment?
We do. Mayor Eugene Galazan is here.
Yeah, good afternoon, or maybe I should say, good evening by now. I did get a chance to read the comments. It wasn't necessarily easy. If any of you have read the comments, it's like, really? In fact, you know, they're horse sculptures. And I had to, you know, given the comments, I had to counsel my horses a little bit, the sculptures, and tell them that, don't take it personally. So I guess the council, mayor, are in the position to decide. Certainly, there was an overwhelming number of folks that wrote in and said that they were against it. For me, as an artist and a sculpture, and a sculptor, I understand that the public sometimes is not in tune with some of the work as an artist, but I certainly respect the council's decision. So that's all I have to, unless there are any questions for me as the artist.
Councilmember Ruasing?
I'd like to make a motion.
Yeah, I think we're ready.
Mayor, I move to deny the proposed sculpture donation and suggested location.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. A yes vote is to deny.
Passes 601.
Okay, we'll move on to item 11C.
Approval of city contract number 2025-138, a memorandum of understanding between the Nature Conservancy and the city of Prescott, formalizing a mutual collaboration to evaluate locations and techniques feasible for grassland restoration.
Good afternoon, council and mayor. Brian Reese, Water Resources Environmental Services Manager. So I just have a real quick presentation for you here today. I think you had a lot of the information in your packet to understand what we're trying to do here with this memo of understanding. All right, let's see if I can pull this back up to the top. Well, we might not have all the slides that I had loaded in. Oh, it looks like they're moving it up here. Yeah. But that's okay, I can kind of speak through this. There was only a couple of slides, anyway. I just wanted to give you a brief history of this project and what we did about a little over a year ago. The Nature Conservancy came over to the city and told us about the Big Chino and Williamson Valley watershed assessment that they were doing, and asked us if we'd like to participate in that. And we said, yeah, we're interested in that. We have our Big Chino Water Ranch up in that property. And we're always looking at for ways that we can manage that property better and understand ways to make sure that it's, that it's as healthy as can be. So... Oh, okay, thank you, Sarah. So we, we worked through them as we were doing the watershed assessment. This watershed assessment was included in your agenda packet. They looked at various aspects. They looked at the hydrology in the Big Chino watershed. They looked at geology. They looked at the climate. They looked at the wildlife. And with all that data, they started to do an assessment on the health of the grasslands in the area and the erosion and sedimentation that was happening in a lot of the ephemeral streams that run through there. They took that data and they started to look at what they could do, strategies for controlling that erosion in the ephemeral channels and in the washes and reduce the sedimentation loads. Put that all together and made recommendations, and then started looking at possible funding sources so that they could get those projects moving. So throughout those efforts, the city was involved with all of that. We attended meetings with them. We became a stakeholder in the process. We took the Nature Conservancy out. We hosted a tour of the Big Chino Water Ranch so that they could see firsthand what was going on out there and the scope and the magnitude of the property. And then they drafted up their watershed assessment. We had a chance to review that draft. We commented on it. And we commented on the final assessment when that was done, too. So with that, at the end of that whole process, they came with us with a draft memo of understanding to try to partner with the city so that we could start moving on trying to identify some projects that could be done in the Big Chino Water Ranch to help that, to help that property. So the memo of understanding has, the intent of it was threefold. Formalize a mutual collaboration between us and the Nature Conservancy. Establish each party's responsibilities. So main responsibilities of the city for this would be to, to work with the Nature Conservancy as they, to identify project locations within the Big Chino Water Ranch that would, that would work well for this project. Provide them access to the property. Work with them to identify proper consultants who could do the, could prepare the design needed for these projects. And, you know, that type of collaboration is what our responsibilities would be. The Nature Conservancy themselves would, would, would work with the consultants to, to prepare the design for these, for these projects and then also start looking for funding sources so that they could, so that projects can move forward. So the purpose... So the purpose, I think we've kind of defined that, but we would be there to give access and to help move the project forward and try to establish projects that would reduce erosion potential on the property, help reestablish the grasslands on the property, and try to get the, establish more infiltration and less runoff of stormwater through the property to establish better aquifer health. The term of-
You had a question?
Wait till he's done.
Councilman Moore, you had a question?
I'll wait till he's done.
Okay. The term of the memo of understanding would start on March 25th and would proceed through March 4th of 2030. And there is that, there's no city funding is required for this. The Nature Conservancy has secured funding to get us through the evaluation of these projects. They would still have to find additional funding for construction of the projects at that point in time, but the city would be able to get these design documents and these studies that we could then utilize to move forward at a different time if it was necessary because the funding just wasn't in place. But we would have additional information or good information that we could utilize moving forward, at the very least at the end of this project. So with that, you know, those are the benefits to the city, I think, having a partnership with the Nature Conservancy. We have a big area of land out there, grassland, and we have an organization we can partner with that has extensive experience and expertise in creating projects to help ensure that that land is healthy. So that's a huge benefit to the city. We have the opportunity to design and develop some plans that will allow us to do that erosion protection, maybe fund a few projects, but if nothing else, get a plan underway on how we would want to approach it at a later date. And maybe spearhead some of these projects into the Big Chino and the Williamson Valley that will help spur additional projects in that area, which could provide better and bigger and more aquifer health throughout that watershed in that region. So that's basically my presentation for you today, staff. We feel this is a win-win project. It allows us to work with the Nature Conservancy, to work towards goals that they have and that the city has for that property and hopefully throughout the Big Chino. So I do have Kim Shonik here from the Nature Conservancy. She's here in the audience, so she can answer any detailed questions you might have about the project or about the partnership. But that's what I have for you today, so if you have to answer any questions you may have.
Councilmember Rusing?
The Nature Conservatory made a very conservancy, I'm sorry, made a very impressive, comprehensive presentation to the Water Issue Subcommittee, and we were, I believe, 3-0 in favor of continuing with this, supporting this project, mainly because it will help with our natural recharge of the aquifer and on our water ranch. And as you know, growing up in Arizona, we'll have periods of drought, and then all of a sudden, we'll get a huge downpour, and it'll be, create, yeah, just wash everything away and create huge ravines, and then all that water is lost. And so I support this 100%. Thank you.
Councilwoman Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. Brian, I just wanted to comment that, I guess, I was, I wouldn't say disappointed, that's too harsh, but I was, I guess disappointed is the word I'll use, to find out about this project when I got my packet and not know about it all along, I guess. I would love to have known that the city was working on a project like this because something like this is near and dear to my heart, and I'm extremely interested in it, supportive of it, and I didn't even know this was happening until I got my packet on Friday, and it's been going on for a year. And so I think if I could just give you some encouragement that, let elected officials know what projects you're working on, because we can give you support and encouragement and maybe provide a little direction, because for some of us, some of these kinds of projects are near and dear to our heart, and I didn't even know what's happening. So I just want to share that with you as a sitting council member. Thank you.
Well, thanks for sharing that. And sometimes we get dug into our own little world and our own little projects, and we forget to expand out. So thank you.
Well, I think any project that would support recharge of the aquifer up there as ADWR is contemplating our decision in order, and both a comprehensive agreement, number one, being able to add this to our efforts, to be able to show that we're effectively managing our potential for the Big Chino pipeline in the future is bound to be of benefit. Would you agree with that?
Yes, I would.
I don't know if we can actually submit something to ADWR to show that we're working in conjunction with the Nature Conservancy. In addition to all of our monitoring wells and other things like that, you know, here's a, what I would consider an effective additional step that should be taken into consideration with our final decision, if we ever get one, on our decision in order.
Yeah, well, at the very least, we can reach out with them. You know, we have representatives at NAMWA from ADWR, and we collaborate with them all the way through on our, as we're going through and doing our various regulation documentation that's needed. So I can definitely reach out and let them know the efforts that we're doing with this project.
Well, I've had a long, long, long-term relationship with the Nature Conservancy as a member when I was in college. So I won't tell you how long ago that was. It was a long time ago. But I've continued to monitor some of their major projects, and they always have seemed to be able to really provide a lot of valuable analysis and even acquisition of properties that were threatened, that have, you know, high standards of need for conservancy. So I think this is pretty much a no-brainer here, too. Councilmember Rusing?
I'd like to make a motion.
Do we have any public comment?
We do not, Mayor.
No? Okay, I think your motion's in order.
I move to approve city contract number 2025-138.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Passes 70.
Now we're moving on to item 11D.
GPA 22-001, a discussion, review, and approval regarding the updated City of Prescott 2025 general plan applicant City of Prescott Community Development Department.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Tammy DeWitt, Community Planner. Good evening. So this has been a long journey. So today, we're going to do kind of an introduction to you of the general plan, how we got to where we are, and what we're going to be asking for you for our next meeting on March 11th. First, we're going to start off, what is a general plan? The general plan is a public document that guides future land use decisions. Zoning, rezoning, and new developments must be consistent with and conform to the city's adopted general plan. So many times when we bring projects forward to you that require public hearings, even before the Board of Adjustments, we do look for, to our general plan to say, yes, this is in compliance with the general plan. When rezonies come in, this is a document that we go to to make sure it's in compliance with the future land use map. What does a general plan do? It guides future decisions about growth while balancing economic development and city resources. It's a roadmap describing the destination and the path to reach it, and it creates goals and strategies based on the community input. What does it not do? Prevent all future growth and development within the city. Change existing entitlements without further action. Commit city resources or preempt decisions of the current or future city council. Compel a private property owner to develop a particular use or type of building or influence applications that are already under review. Do we have any questions so far? Nope. Okay, cool. So Arizona revised statutes delineates what has to be in the general plan. So there's, for all general plans, they have to have land use, circulation, open space, growth areas, environmental planning, cost of development, water resources. The city, we added two additional elements with our last two general plans of economic development and community quality. We understand, we came to the conclusion, we're at like 48,000 people, give or take some. We know we're going to be hitting 50,000 over the next 10 years, since this is a 10-year plan. We looked at recreation. Recreation was already in our plan. We pulled that out as, for a separate element. Circulation, we had in there. We expanded it to what's required once you hit 50,000. Transit, we addressed. Housing, we had all that in our existing general plan before. We pulled that out as a separate element, and we kind of looked at the others and tried to integrate it in where we could into this updated general plan. So we did come up, we started this in 2022. We came up with a four-year process, and I'll go through this. This is kind of what we put together to keep us, me and the general plan committee on track and make sure we're meeting all of our trigger points. We did create a plan website. The motto we came up with was Plan Prescott, Planning the Future and Preserving the Past. And we've used that throughout all our marketing and as a plan as it's been moving forward. So the first phase was started in 2022. We kind of got ourselves together. We started looking at census data. It was really slow coming out because of COVID. We started reviewing other general plans to see what people were adding, how they were formatting it, what they were looking like. We didn't want to do another kind of basic general plan. We wanted to make something that looked better and was more that you want to read it. Then the city council appointed an 11-member general plan committee, which started going out and doing outreach and letting people know that we're starting this process. And then in the fall, we started meeting, getting handouts out to the public, and just started looking at the document and see what we needed to update and or change. We also created at that time a staff review committee. We had representation from all the city departments within the City of Prescott, and we met monthly so I could update them where we were in the process and if I needed any information. And also, that's where we started scheduling all the departments to come in front of the general plan committee and do presentations. Who are they? What do they do? What are some things they might have implemented over the last 10 years? Remind them there is a general plan. Some of them didn't know. And what are some goals over the next 10 years or things that we'd like to accomplish? 2023 was kind of us really getting started, looking into it. We did all the presentations. We started getting public input. Every meeting was held in council chambers. It was recorded. It was open to the public, and we integrated all the public comment that we could into the draft as we were updating it. Then on August 30th, 2023, we had an open house at the adult center, and we had about 200 residents signed in and participated, and we got a lot of great feedback at that time, and all that information is on the website, all the comments that we got. At the end of 2023, we, the National Planning Association released what they, some of the awards that they gave out. In Greensboro, North Carolina, for their comprehensive plan, won the National Planning Association Award for Comprehensive Plan. At that time, we started looking at state laws, said what you have to have in the plan, but now how you have to present it. So what Greensboro did, actually, it's a really cool document. It's all interactive. It's like you're reading a book. You're turning pages. There's tabs at the top, and you can go to separate chapters. It's very interactive. And we were like, wow, this is really cool. And then, wow, look at this, six big ideas. I'm like, what can we come up with for Prescott? We're not Greensboro. They had like 50 senior planners to work on it, five planning managers. We're like, well, we have one planner, one planning manager, and a director. What can we do with the general plan committee? So at the end of 2023, I brought this before the general plan committee with a new format, which I would never suggest doing this in the middle of a process, but we're very excited about how it turned out. So we created five different livability goals: resiliency and sustainability, a community connected, which is more of a regional look at it, great places and neighborhoods. We're kind of looking more at the neighborhoods and the certain areas, economic competitiveness and prosperity, and community quality. So this is where we kind of took everything that we've been working on and everything I got from all the city departments and city staff, and we started putting together in this new format. So in 2024, we finished the department presentations, and I started harassing staff that I needed information and updated chapters. We started putting them in the new format and bringing them in front of the general plan committee, which I admit was a little hard to do. We're looking at the 15 plan, and we're looking at the new format and trying to figure out, are we missing something? Did we forget something? And so we went through a lot of that. After the general plan committee reviewed the draft and gave all their input, then we took it to the department heads and the staff to make sure that we captured everything, we didn't change anything. That was something that we just know we can't do, because there's a lot of goals and strategies in this document, a lot. And, but we have 10 years, and some of these are already being done. I mean, we started, this was in 2024, and if we look at some of those goals and strategies, they're already completed, so we can check that off on that implementation plan. At the August 28th meeting, the general plan committee voted to move the draft forward. We realized we've done all we could. Let's take it out to the residents and see what they think. We started our 60-day public comment period that ran from September 23rd to November 21st. During that time, we also had two open houses. Not as great participation, but we also had the Prop 478 going on, and we had other meetings. So, but we did get some great comment, and we also had the virtual meeting room, which worked really well, where people can do it at their home. They could go in, and they provide comments online, and we got a lot of great comments. The 60-day public comment ended on November 21st. We want to thank everybody who participated and provided comments. At the December 11th, 2024 general plan meeting, the committee voted to move the draft plan forward to the public hearing process. And then we started that process in 2025. Are there any questions so far about that, how we got to that point? Nope.
Councilmember Rusing?
Yes, thank you, Tammy. I just wanted to give you some feedback. Today, I had a concerned citizen who told me that she tried to print out the general plan from the website, and all she, it was just black. She couldn't do it, so...
Which what website and which?
That she went on the city website to print it out, and she said she couldn't. It was just, as she said, black. She's not here. She's already left. But anyway, I just wanted to give you that feedback. Do you know if people have been having problems printing it out? Because I know there aren't any paper copies available, although I think we should have paper copies available at the library at least, so that people can review it if they don't have a computer or something.
Sure. I'm not sure what happened once they got published. So that was the first I heard of it today. Nobody ever said anything about having trouble with it.
Okay. And then my second comment is, I have some specific comments, like about the airport. Do I just submit them for-
I'll get to that at the end.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Okay. Land use map, the future land use map. That is kind of the crux of the- That is kind of the crux of the plan. That's the planning document where we're showing where we see future land use, where we're growing. We know to the west, we have the county land that's already developed, and then you have Forest Service. On the east side, we have Prescott Valley right at our border. To the south, we have some county lands, a little bit out there that may get developed, a few vacant parcels, but then you have forest. But it's to the north where we're going to grow. Per ARS nine four sixty-one dash zero six in regards to land use maps, what it states is basically with private property and state trust land, because state trust land is still considered kind of private property. We cannot designate it for conservation, open space, recreation, or agriculture. In the last plan, I did find some emails from the state land department that they were in fifteen were supportive of the north area being agriculture. And at the time, so did Deepwell Ranch. By the time, we've, it's been ten years. That's where our growth's happening. So they're no longer supportive of that. So based on the statute, we have to allow at least, not at least, one dwelling unit per acre is what it says. And that's been determined also by the attorney general's office and an interpretation that the state land department asked them to do. So we updated our land use map. And in the north area, we have it as a low to medium density, which is one to seven dwelling units per acre. This is what the map that the general, the general plan committee voted on. And also, we reviewed it very extensively with the Planning and Zoning Commission. And they also supported to keep this land use map as is. There was some discussion because previously we did have a land use category. Now, let me clarify too. These are land use designations, which are delineated on page sixty-six in the general plan. This goes with the land use designations. It's not zoning. This, this, this might match some of the zoning in town, but this is not a zoning map. It, they're land use designations. So there's a difference between those. So before, we had a category called very low density, which was less than one dwelling unit per acre. That is a violation of state law. So as staff, we had two choices. Either we changed this to one dwelling unit per acre or we got rid of it and went to very low density. The comments we got from the two property owners, which are Deepwell Ranch and the state trust land, they're the biggest landowners mostly. It's all North Prescott is that, those areas. They requested it to be very low density, allowing the one to seven dwelling units per acre. And the reason for that, you know, this is a future land use map. We know if those areas are ever annexed, they are not going to be one dwelling unit per acre. That doesn't match what's around the area. That with one to seven dwelling unit, and it's, this allows other departments, such as water resources, fire department, the police department to kind of gauge out where are we going to grow and how can we grow in that area? If we have it at one dwelling unit per acre, that's not good planning. But if we have it one to seven dwelling units per acre, or you can change that, that category. It allows us to do future land use planning and kind of determine where our needs are going to be for, in the future for.
Councilmember Rusing, you had a question on this item?
Yes, I did. Now, I understand it whenever we annex property in from the county, it's what RE two?
So.
So that's what, one dwelling per two acres? I was just wondering if there's a conflict or how that's going to be affected?
That's a great question. So it depends on what does, under the county zoning is. For that area of, of the county, it is RCU. RCU is a holding zone in the county. So in nineteen sixty-nine, when the county adopted zoning, the whole county was zoned RCU and was actually eighteen at that time. Until then, the early seventies, they came in and detailed zones in certain areas. So RCU has always been considered a holding zone for something else to come in or it's developed as that. When we look at different areas on the map, we'll see if this is going to work. Oh, look at this. These areas are like one acre, the two acre lots in the county. And then these are a little higher density in the, in the, in the city. So these areas, then we have Deepwell Ranch here. This land is state trust land. They asked for that to be mixed use to match Deepwell Ranch because that's what's adjacent. And then these rest of the area is a low to medium density.
So if.
So when we, when we annex a property, the first thing we do is match the zoning. So if it's RCU two A, when we annex it, they rezone it to RE two acre to match it. And then they can come in with a rezoning to change that. And that's when we look at this map to make sure that whatever they're proposing would match it or it could trigger a map amendment.
So everything else that's already under the old zoning, the RE two is going to be grandfathered in? This is just for future annexations?
This doesn't change zoning.
Okay.
Because this is not a zoning map.
Okay.
So this does not change any zoning in the city of Prescott until somebody comes forward with a rezoning request.
Okay.
And then when they come forward with that rezoning request, that's when we look at this map, is it in compliance with it or not? If not, then we go to the major plan amendment chart and determine where they are. So if they are currently, oh, okay, open space and rec, well, let me go back here just so I can finish this one real quick. So we did discuss this significantly with the Planning and Zoning Commission at their January thirtieth Planning and Zoning Meeting. We went over the map as a separate item. And staff discussed whether they wanted to add very low density back as a land use designation. They did vote to keep it as is without the very low density category. So they didn't change anything on the map from what was presented at the beginning.
Mayor Protem Ken Tomy.
Tammy, let me ask you about properties that are currently being used for something other than what their underlying zoning is. Does this land use map, is the presumption that the current use that would be a violation to the zoning, does this have an influence on the future zoning if the current use were to come in for, let's say, a special use permit? How much of an influence would this have on that?
So if I go back to what the plan does not do, prevent, does not change existing entitlements without further action. So those are, this is not a zoning map. It's a designation for future projects coming forward. It doesn't affect anything, how they're being used or what, or what their zoning is now.
Okay, so it does not influence, you're saying no?
Correct. It does not.
Okay. One last thing. Did anybody consider possibly putting the land use map like chapter one, since it's a land use? It took me, I have all these things to get all the way to the land use map and at page, what, one hundred and four, whatever it was?
Because it needs to go with the land use designation so people know how to use it. Because that's where it's discussed. The land use map is discussed with the land use designations under the, the great places and neighborhoods, because that's where we're planning it. And then it's also mentioned again under major plan amendments because that maps what triggers major plan, that's a major plan amendment.
Thank you.
Sure. And we never see a land use map without being a map, without being where it's being discussed. Because that's kind of, that would be hard, that'd be harder. Because you're like, what's this map? What does it go with? So, yeah. So the major plan amendment chart, this was something that came out in, later in twenty twenty-four. So before, in the last two general plans, well, actually, so when the Growing Smarter legislation got adopted, the cities and towns were required to create a, what's going to trigger a major plan amendment. So the city of Prescott and adopted a resolution in two thousand and two that created what constitutes a major plan amendment. So that's what was in the last two general plans. Basically, it starts at forty acres. Then if you look at forty acres, which, and then we look at whether, how many residences are close by. It was kind of confusing, but at the time, it, because it was so rural out in the, out lying areas, it may have made sense back in two thousand and five or two thousand and two and for the two thousand and fifteen. But now we're more built out and we're seeing more infill developments. So some of the citizens brought some other major plan amendment charts for us to look at. And so what we did was we made a map of the city of Prescott. We looked at all the vacant parcels in the city of Prescott, looked at their sizes and tried to figure out, you know, what, what may, might they maybe change to and what, which, what would trigger the most impact to the adjacent neighbors? So open space and recreation, if it's designated, doesn't have to be zoned, designated as open space or recreation, which are all our city parks that we put on the map, any change to those requires a major plan amendment. And then it goes on to other criterias. We went through this very extensively with the general plan committee. And we had it with the open houses and we got really good support and good comments about it. That was a great compromise. This is, we know there's, we probably will see some major plan amendments. We never saw one before, but this could trigger in the future, some major plan amendments coming forward.
Councilmember Rusing.
Oh, I was just going to say that earlier today, we voted to move our open space under the protection of the charter. Is that going to change this map? Because it seems like you wouldn't be able to make a major plan amendment if it's in the charter without a vote of the people.
No, it, it wouldn't change that.
It wouldn't change.
We'd have the restrictions that are in place because of the charter. And practically speaking, there could be in, in something that's recreation, for example, that would want to change. It's open space and recreation, that would go through a major plan amendment. But it wouldn't impact the vote that happened in regards to open space.
Okay, thank you.
So.
Simon Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. Tammy, I just wanted to follow up on what you said. Did you say there's been no major plan amendments before?
Correct.
Like ever in the history of Prescott or just since the last general plan?
Nope. No, no, nothing, nothing, no projects are ever triggered a major plan amendment.
Okay. I just was curious about that.
But this probably would because we, we do have twenty acre parcels or ten acre parcels that could trigger this.
So it's contemplated that it'll likely happen going forward?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So the major plan amendment process is kind of similar to the general plan process that we've been going through. So basically, an applicant brings forward a project. We go through the pre-application process. Then they would, so through the, before, if they made, they triggered a major plan amendment, major plan amendments can only be heard once a year. So usually you had a trigger of June or July that they could submit a major plan amendment. And then they usually were heard in December. The idea was that you're looking at all the major plan amendments at once and see how overall the impact to your community. Well, two years ago, our legislature watered that down. So now it can be, it has to be heard within twelve months of them submitting. So it can be heard any time of year instead of altogether, they can be scattered throughout the year. So we have to process them within twelve months of, of them being submitted. It does require a sixty day public comment period. And the, the list that we send it out to is pretty consistent with what we did for the, well, actually, the general, the general plan was a lot more than that. But it's pretty consistent with that. And then we have to have two Planning and Zoning Commission meetings. And then the city council would have a public hearing to consider it within twelve months of it being submitted. So, and then also state law requires a two-thirds majority vote by city council to approve a major amendment. So instead of having just a regular four, we need five members to approve it. So is there any questions about this? Like I said, we, we went through it very extensively with the general plan committee and the Planning and Zoning Commission had no concerns or no changes to it and moved it forward as is. Okay. So there have been some questions about, like the neighborhood plans and stuff. So, you know, the general plan is statutory requirement. So that was our phrase one. We mind get this done and, and get it through the, to the voters. And then every year, we're going to be looking at when we do our strategic plans, we do have an implementation section in this, which is the first time in our general plan we've had an implementation section. So every year, we're going to be looking at all the goals and strategies. Are there any low hanging fruit or something that we can start moving forward and add to the strategic plans? Phase three, be looking at our commercial corridor study to see if we need to change it or update it. Then we'll start looking at the community and neighborhood plans. Those are all over twenty years old. So that's something we'll look at. We're still doing an inventory of them and we'll be, start looking at those once the general plan's done, only one at a time. And then we'll look at if there's any other plans that we look at. A lot of those neighborhood plans, my understanding is they happened because there was some projects or developments happening in the area. They've occurred, they may not be valid anymore. So that's something we're going to look at and see if there's something else we should look at.
Mayor Protem.
Tammy, that's a great subject right now. We've been having issues with some of the neighborhood plans that I think there's been a misunderstanding with a lot of neighborhoods that they, these no neighborhood plans are just, you know, going off into perpetuity. And can you make sure that in this document, that it is noted that these have a ten year lifespan? And then?
They don't.
They, so they go on forever?
My understanding, because they're approved by resolution or order, resolution? Resolution? That until we go through and rescind it, that there's no time, unless there's a timeframe on it. Most community plans, yeah, there's a ten year timeframe, but there's nothing, these are not required by state statutes, so there's nothing in state statutes about their timeframes.
So Dallin, we've talked about this in our meetings. So how are we going to address this going forward then?
That'd be have to, that'd have to be an action of the council, right? Either to establish a expiration, to have staff go through it and rescind some, to, I mean, one thought might be in future general plans, I don't know if we've got the time on this one, to kind of roll plans in and then finish them out. We, we could figure out a process, but that would be another action we need to take.
You know, that makes total sense. If we adopt the neighborhood plans at the beginning of these general plans, then they would expire when the general plan is ready to expire. Because I, we've had some issues with this going forward.
Yes, sometimes you might adopt a neighborhood plan with, you know, two or three years left on a general plan, right? And then you've got to consider like, it needs time to be effective and there may be grant implications or things like that. It's, it's an interesting question. It's one we can keep looking at if you're.
So maybe we should just carve it out of this and just, you know, deal with those in a separate situation?
Yeah, I think this addresses kind of the reality of where we are now. And if we want to change that, then we can look at actions to do that.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to be able to do that in the future. Thank you.
And we could put together a process of how we are going to look at the new, the boulder gym, the neighborhood plans and on our steps forward. And we can bring that to you after this one, one at a time.
So we could establish a, a policy on all neighborhood plans will expire in ten years. We could establish that by resolution, correct?
Yeah, sure.
But we couldn't go back? Wouldn't this trigger an ex post facto restriction to go back to an old neighborhood plan that did not have an expiration on it?
I, I think it would depend on how you drafted that resolution. But you could have a resolution that said, all community plans are rescinded at this point. Or you could say they all expire in ten years and any new one will expire in ten years from then. So you can handle that. Clearly, the, the problem with some of the old community or neighborhood plans is that they reference zoning that no longer exists in our code. So, but you could, I, I think it needs council action, but you could do that through a resolution like the one you proposed.
I think that's something we probably ought to consider. Councilmember Rusing.
I would just like to make the comment, you know, I'm thinking of the Gail Gardner neighborhood and they've been very active lately. It's a very old neighborhood. And I'm somewhat alarmed at kind of the cavalier, oh, we'll just rescind everyone all at once. Is, is there going to be any notice to these people so that they can have a say in it or involve, be involved in the process? I mean, I, I think we need to be better neighbors to our neighborhoods that have a plan. You know, and we just all of a sudden say, oh, well, we'll just not do this anymore.
Well, we, we weren't looking at doing that just yet until we get through the general plan. And then we were going to come up with a process of how we're going to review the general plans and reach out and do all that. So as we take an inventory of them. So in summary, the next meeting will be March eleventh.
Tammy, but Councilwoman Ferworth has a question.
Actually, I'm going to let her finish this slide and then I'll begin.
Thank you. So what we're asking is that any questions or things that you need clarified or want clarified in the plan to email them to me? clarified in the plan, to email them to me, so that if I need to reach out to the other departments who wrote that section, and to get clarification, or have other staff here for the next meeting, we can have them here. And then, any direction do you like to provide? And that concludes my presentation.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you. So, that was what I was, I was asking, is how would you, I mean, honestly, the council, this is, we've gotten the general plan now, it's gone through lots of other people, and now it's our time to finally comment. And I, I took it from reading some of the comments of public, that they assumed we've had our fingers all over this for a year, and we haven't. So, the question is, is how do we, how do we effectively engage, as part of this, with staff? I, I've gotten through 40 pages so far, and I probably have 50 pink sticky notes, and I can only imagine as I get up to the 160th page. So, so, that's the question. Yeah, Kathy can show everybody. So, you know, how do we effectively engage, and with the timetable of how we effectively engage with you all? Because I'm kind of feeling like I've got a Gatling gun to my head to say yes, and, and I'm gonna have problems doing that, because the public's gonna be looking to us to say, you know, "What have you done?" And I'm gonna say, "Oh, I guess I just rubber stamped it. Go ask someone else." So, I, I don't know what you expect, because this is my first time being involved with a general plan. So, what are the expectations of council in this process, so we are effective in engaging?
Sure. So, what, what I did with the Planning and Zoning Commission was, I asked them, "Any questions, or, or anything in the plan that you might need clarified, or want clarification on, to email them to me?" And then, what I can do is, I put them together in a presentation with each question or comment, and like, how we addressed it, or we can have other staff here from those departments here to address it, or to clarify it. And then, we, I separated by chapter, so then, we're going by chapter, to try to keep it organized in a way, as you're going through your comments. So, if you're done with a chapter or two, send, start sending me your comments.
Okay. So, we need to do this in the public. I don't know that we have enough time to work through this in our normal voting meetings, and if you're trying to make the August ballot, I know the date is March 25th, because that's what we just did with open space earlier today. I don't know that I can effectively engage and get myself there by March 25th. So, what's your thoughts on how to, other than me writing emails, and you writing me emails back, and we're death by 1,000 emails?
Just, you're gonna send me your emails, your questions, and then I'm gonna get the information and present it to all of you at the next council meeting. And what, you can get to me before the next council meeting.
Two weeks.
So, I have a, a week, I think, to put it in the agenda packet. But the time for the turnarounds to get stuff in the packets, it makes it very hard.
The committee had two years, and we get two weeks. Yeah, that sounds fair.
So, that's, that's, for me, in light of the fact that we have other things we have to do at voting meeting agendas, I really do think we need to set up some additional meetings, not that I have time for all of these in the next 30 days, but I really do think we need to have some quality time focused just on this, versus saving it to the very end, past dinner, when everyone wants to go home, and not doing due diligence with it. I'm just worried.
If I can jump in real quick, the council has the option to certainly schedule special meetings, and consider which ballot. So, if the council wants to have this on the November ballot, so that there's more time to evaluate, that's something that the council can decide to do.
We had a goal of the August ballot, but if we don't make it, we have the, the November ballot. So, we have a little time, except for the timeframe when council chambers is closed, and we have no meetings.
Well, we can have meetings in places other than the council chambers. So, I think it's starting to look like November to me.
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. Tammy, I had a question, kind of specifically about the process going forward at the next meeting, when we've kind of had our revision process with you, because there's been a number of items that have come across, that I've gotten feedback from folks that have been controversial, right? And I think, I guess my question is, do you anticipate we'll, we'll discuss those items, and have specific votes about those items as we move forward? Or is it just gonna be like, here's the general plan, that's been reviewed and approved by everyone else, and you can either up it or down it? I mean, do you have a thought? And again, I'm kind of, I think everyone who's sitting up here has not been part of a general plan before, I think. Oh, Conny has, okay. But as a member of council, no. So, no member of council here has been through a general plan as a member of council. So, I guess I'm just trying to understand what that process looks like, for the feedback that I've gotten from residents, and then, kind of curtailing, you know, the feedback I'm gonna give you between now and the next time we meet.
Well, it depends on the comment, if it's something to vote on, like, to change language, or change something, then we can vote on it. We had it advertised, so you guys can vote on certain things. So, if it's, as we're going through, and you want to vote for, for consensus, or make sure that's how you want it, we can do that as we, because it helps me to be able to update it. I did not make the plan look as pretty as it is, I wish I could have done that, if I would have had more time, and we had 50 planners. But I'm gonna put a shout out to Kimley Horn, you know, we gave them a draft of a, in a Word document, and they created this plan. So, you know, so, and then, they're the ones that are updating it. So, I go in and tell them what to update, they update it, so we can make sure that you guys are trying to get the, the most recent.
I, I appreciate that clarity. Thank you, Tammy.
And I just want to add for the council, if you all make a decision that you're not ready to vote on this, and have ballot language March 25th, you've got till, like, the end of July. So, you're not on a time crunch after that, after this, if you make the decision that you don't want to do that. So, we don't need to be, like, squeezing in extra meetings.
Yeah, that's good, that's good to know.
Councilmember Rus.
Thank you. I would just like to say, I love the new format. It's very refreshing, it's comprehensive, and it engages the reader, and I just want to thank you for taking the initiative, you and the, and the committee, for doing something a little extraordinary. Thank you.
And I'd like to actually thank the committee for working with me on that, and like I said, we kind of threw it at them at the last second, "Hey, let's just do this whole format," and that's how it went forward, and they, they were great to work with, to try to keep it going forward as much as we could, and to work with me with the new format.
Mayor Protem.
So, in our, how detailed do we get in our notes? I mean, I don't have a ton, but, you know, there's a lot of typos in here, misspellings, who takes care of that? And then, also, like, the AVO, we've just passed it, can you remove the projection in here that says we may consider the AVO, things like that? Do we make notes like that to you?
Well, like I said, you know, this document's been worked on over the last year, a lot of those goals and strategies have been, are been worked on and done, we might just keep them in there, so we can say that we did it, you know?
But do we say we did it in, you know, right now, underneath the paragraph, maybe in parenthesis, "Already done, check."
Well, so, there's a whole implementation spreadsheet that I've been work, I have a draft of, but it's all the goals and strategies, but until we see what changes, it's still kind of a work in project, progress. So, at the end of the plan, on those last pages, you're, you see the format of it. So, basically, it's a spreadsheet, and it says, "What's the goal, what's the action, or the strategy? Who's responsible? Is it Public Works with council funding, or, you know, code amendment changes, or something?" And just because it's a goal or a strategy in the plan, does not mean it's gonna happen, because things can change, there could be not funding for it, but we're looking at, how do we want to grow as a city forward, and to use next, new technologies, and new, you know, other processes that, to make it, things a little bit better.
Okay, but back to my original question, do you want us to give you a list of the typos? The ones we've at least found? I mean, is that appropriate?
You can, I mean, because it's gonna be so, we've had many people looking at it, but we can all miss, we're human. And then, when, once we get closer, or I get the ballot, then we'll finish up the implementation, and we'll have that as a working document, so.
Do we have any public comment?
We do, Mayor. Our first card is from James Hulbling.
Good evening, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you today. So, as the leader of the Martin Luther King Peace and Justice Committee, I was contacted last week by City Attorney Jill Young through Ralph Hess, and he proposed a change in wording to the non-discrimination statement that's in the general plan, that was proposed by our committee. And he proposed changing, replacing the words, "The city does not condone," at the beginning of the statement, with the words, "is inconsistent with the city of Prescott values" at the end of the statement. And so, I took that to our committee, and they, they approved that. They approved that change in wording. "We believe the reference to Prescott's values falls more in line with what you would find in a general plan." And I think it's important to recognize that what we are discussing is a plan, and a plan that informs the reader of Prescott's values in terms of land development. And since land development has a huge economic impact on the city, the plan should reflect Prescott's best side. And research has shown that cities that promote diversity are better off economically than those that don't. Studies indicate that cities that promote cultural diversity benefit in terms of tourism, education, innovation, and restaurant choice. So, please consider keeping the statement in the plan to not only give agency to the underrepresented members of our community, but also to potentially bolster our city's economy by attracting a culturally diverse citizenry to everybody's hometown. Thank you.
Patrick Grady.
Pass.
Anne Breckwald.
Sheila.
Robert Shagog.
Yeah, Billy.
Cecilia Allen.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. My name is Jenna James. I reside at 1755 Commonwealth Street. My comments today are about the anti-discrimination language in the introduction to the general plan. I do want to say that I also agree with the previous speaker, I think that language that's being proposed to be changed, I think is great, because it is about values. I recently read a quote that really illuminated this issue for me, and says, "Hate is loud, but I think you will learn, it's because it's only a few people shouting, desperate to be heard." And that seems to be the case with the anti-discrimination language. The vast majority of comments that the planning department received, over 17 pages of comments, were in support of keeping that language as part of the general plan. And when I say vast majority, I mean 5%. Only seven total comments out of 137 suggested that it needed to be edited or removed. Truthfully, I don't even think I'd be speaking here today if members of council didn't attend general plan meetings, and turned something that says that we, as a community, aspire not to discriminate against federally protected classes, into something that has become political, and it shouldn't be. It's a basic tenet of human decency. It's something that your parents probably taught you, it's something that I know I'm teaching my children, and you probably have all done the same. We all remember the golden rule, treat others as you want to be treated. And if that language was in the plan, I don't think anyone would have an objection. Most people have said, "Oh, this is a land planning document, it doesn't belong here," but we just heard Tammy say that one of the sections is "community quality." The general plan is more than a land planning document, it's a vision for the future of Prescott. My generation, who grew up here, they're starting to return to raise their families here, and we're hoping that five, 10, 20 years from now, that our children do the same. And to me, it is important, I want them to come back to a community that loves them, and embodies our motto of everybody's hometown. So, I think that this statement needs to be in the general plan, because it's just as important for me today as it is for them in the future. When you took office, you were all elected to represent everyone within the city of Prescott, not just those who voted for you. You represent everyone, regardless of whether they look like you, or act like you, whether they hold the same beliefs as you, whether they have the same socioeconomic status as you do. And we're coming up to an election year. Personally, when I cast my vote, I'm not thinking about whether or not you and I agree on matters of policy, because your opinion on policy and, and mine can change over time. Instead, I'm looking to the content of your character, and I'd like to see what the content of your character is going to say on this issue. Thank you.
Stephen Polk.
My name is Stephen Polk, 125 North Granada Street, Prescott. Speaking on behalf of James Depot Ranch as their attorney. Tough act to follow, I thought those were great comments from Jenna. The first thing I want to do is, is address, Councilmember Rusing asked a question about the use of the future land use map, and how property, when it gets annexed, and what's that zoning? And I'll, I'll tell you, the general plan in the future land use map don't have any effect on that. There's a, it's called the zoning equivalency, and automatically, by state law, when a municipality annexes land into the city, it has to, by state law, come in with the equivalent zoning. And so, you know, from residential two-acre minimum lot sizes, so any sort of annexation the city does, it automatically comes in with that zoning. Is not zoning. When, as you as a council work on the general plan, you're not making cloud uses are, or what the zoning for the property will be. Rather, it's a, it's future land use, and it affects if any sort of property owner has owned the property. At that point, you as council, you have that decision to whether the general plan and the future land use map help inform you as council as to make that decision. And I'll remind you that zoning is a legislative authority to say yes or no at that time. That's, you're not bound by any other requirements, you could absolutely say no or yes on, on zoning as it comes in. I got a second council go about, the, working on the general plan now, there's been a ton of work that's put into it already, and, and it sounds like there's a ton of work that you guys want to do. And I think it's appropriate, it's, the general plan is a, is a pretty big document, right? There's a lot of, lot going on in it. I know, for myself, you know, I'm, I'm here on a single issue I'm gonna speak to you about, and I'm sure there's a whole host of other people that are, care so I guess I'd suggest maybe one or of two things, either discussion only, where you can't vote. If, if we cared about the issue, we can still attend the voting meeting, or if you wanted to tackle saying, "Hey, we're doing general plan, voting, but voting limited only on we should be at this meeting, because we care that there might be a vote on that issue, or, or that's not gonna be discussed." Now, my substantive comments. So, again, I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of James Depot Ranch.
Even your time's up. Three minutes is gone.
Thank you. The James Depot Ranch is in favor. The James Deepwell Ranch is in favor the future land use map that was approved overwhelmingly at Planning and Zoning Commission and approved overwhelmingly at the letter and James Deepwell Ranch did as well in support of that. You need to plan for the future and allow city staff to plan your needs and, and the and I'll just if you got questions.
Kenneth Golmer.
Councilman Gamboge, did you want to make a statement now or you want to wait until? I'll wait till the comments are complete.
That's it. Everybody left.
There's your time. Every 10 years, we assemble to work three years as required by the state. It's really more than 11 because sometimes you roll some people off and some people on. And the staff works diligently over those three years to, to incorporate all the thinking of all the people in the community. Now, I've heard some comments about, well, you know, they've been working three years, we only have two weeks. If this were a corporate example, this is like the CEO and the board of directors. We understand that we put trust in the really smart people that we recruited and the really smart staff that we've assembled to put together a good general plan. And so I wanted to thank all the members of the general plan committee and the city staff that's worked on this. I also want to thank the residents like Jenna and Jim today that commented. I think that makes this general plan a very good general plan. Is it perfect? No. All right, unless I'm mistaken, I think we're completed our meeting today.
If there's no further comment from the council, then yes, we have. And Tammy, you don't need anything else from them at this point except to provide you with their comments via email for the March 11th, right? Okay, that's it.
So I'll conclude this meeting without a, my typical quote from the founding fathers and just say, "God bless America. God bless the great state of Arizona and God bless Prescott."